But ironically, I'm wanting the owner of two of those lots. Okay, he's going to the house for self-keeping or his daughter in the house. After he had gone round and around the road in the house. He explained why and whatever else. He actually came back.
Not having my ham and a bang? Let's chip that in. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is 7:01. Today is March 22nd. This is the regular planning board meeting for the Arundel Planning Board. I'd like to start with a roll call.
Marty Kaye.
Roger Moore.
Tom McGinn.
Rich Gannon.
Jens Berg.
Thank you very much.
And the camera.
And the camera, the camera is turned on. Thank you, Phil. We have before us the approval of the agenda. Approval of minutes for March 15th, which we're going to have tabled because none of us have them from last week.
They came out a little while ago by email. But I did, no, I, I, the only reason I came back on to turn it to make sure that what time the meeting was tonight. That's why I had solemn.
Okay, we have citizens' comments. Under item number four, there is new business. We have three items. Amani Acres subdivision pre-app. Ledgewood Meadows subdivision preliminary resubdivision plan. And item three, Trotty or paving conditional use pre-application. We have, if we have time, we will get to some proposed amendments to the land use ordinance. And then there will be other business.
Make a motion where you approve the agenda as written. With the exception of the minutes.
Okay, we'll table the minutes to the next meeting.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Tom made the motion, Marty seconded?
That was Roger's motion.
Roger motion, oh, okay.
You gotta get back into things.
Couldn't recognize my voice, right?
That's right, it's been so long. Okay, at this time, we normally have citizens' comments. If there's a citizen of the town that would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda. No comments? We're gonna close the citizens' comments, we're gonna move right on to new business. Item number one, Amani Acres minor subdivision pre-app. Proposal for a four-lot standard subdivision on 23 acres located off Brimstone Road. Tax map 18 lot 1A in the R4 and RP districts. Gary and Carrie Bracy are the owner applicants and Corner Post Lance Surveying is the consultant agent. That would be you. Take it away, boss.
My name's Dana Louie from Corner Post Lance Surveying. This is Chris Copie from Albert Crick Associates. We're here once again representing the Bracy's for their subdivision. This is the sketch plan before you. As part of the preliminary compilation of the information for the subdivision. The Bracy's hired Chris's company to come in here and actually map some wetlands through some preliminary soils, which all is shown on the map here. This was slated to go to the planning board last summer. And that was shortly after the zoning map had changed to include all of this property in the resource protection. Since then, Chris went out and reidentified the wetlands. And him and Tad did a site walk to confirm the location of them and the location of the resource protection zone. As Chris and Tad have defined it, that will be the limits of the resource protection zone is that this wetland here meets that requirement. There's also a flood hazard zone on this property, which is this line here. That line will disappear. Once the new maps are approved, the new FEMA maps are approved, this area has no flood zone. All of this land has been removed for the FEMA flood zone requirements in a new mapping. Once again, the soil testing has taken place, that's these yellow boxes. And the hashed area outside of this is the 100-foot diameter from the soil testing. These brown boxes are the fall locations of houses. And once again, you'll see the lots three and four, those houses are going, would be in the flood zone. And if they are constructed before the new maps are instituted, those houses will have to meet the town's flood zone requirements. The elevation, the first law elevation will have to be one foot above flood zone. We're gonna have to assign a flood elevation to this project as part of the process that we go through. The Bracy's themselves are gonna be utilizing the larger lot here, they're gonna construct a new home out here somewheres. And they'll utilize this driveway and a wetland project to get to that new home. As part of the application process, our proposal, there's gonna be some clearing limits assigned to the lots. To help preserve the wetland area and the areas behind the lots. So that when people come here and do some cleaning for their houses, they can't, they can't stand past these overdirection lines. We viewed this project for dangerous species for habitats and there was no state mapping of any in this area. This is also not within a graph for, seeing graphical graph for. Soil mapping is on here. And definitions are listed as well. I think we're gonna just talk a little bit about the wetland definition because I think that's gonna be the majority of the conversation today. And how that probably came up.
My name is Chris Copie with Albert Crick Associates, a land scientist and licensed surveyor. So, I decide, okay.
Whatever works, or today you can come over here and everybody else can see who knows.
Oh, great, yeah. So, basically, the maps, the shoreline zoning maps that were just changed in, I believe, 2017, show a majority of this area as resource protection. I actually looked a little bit deeper into that, trying to figure out where, where, how that was, how that was created from. And it looked like it was from an old flood map. Because I checked typically, you know, a lot of, a lot of wetland maps are created from, like, actually looking at. It's called the National Wetland regulatory maps, which is usually a good baseline. But it looks like it actually came from an old flood map, what originated the resource protection. So, but the resource protection has to have at least 10 acres of contiguous freshwater inland wetland, according to the ordinance. We were able to, when I mapped this, you know, this, this area is, is less than 10 acres. However, if it's contiguous with a larger wetland that is at least 10 acres, the whole area is zoned resource protection. The definition of ordinance for inland, inland wetlands allows you to actually cut off wetlands that are at least 100 feet in length and less than 100 feet in width. So, we actually identified a couple pinch points. And I brought Tad out with me in December, and he, he, he accepted those pinch points. So, basically, in essence, what that does is it cuts off, it cuts off this, this wetland, well, ends this resource protection there. And therefore, it does not continue any further, further out because of that 100 by 100 rule. That's in the definition inland wetland. And we also have a pinch point here. There is wetland across here, on this side of the road, that's zoned resource protection. But my, my understanding, we're talking with Tad, is that I found no culverts on this road that would otherwise connect the wetlands via hydrology. And it seemed to me, my discussion with Tad is that he accepted that, that not only is this resource protection end here, that if there was any resource protection up there, it would not carry over up to the road.
So, where does it drain? If they're not connected, did it shed opposite direction?
That's a good question. You know, I, I would assume that there was one here. And there was no, I didn't find any culverts here, and I didn't find any culverts here. Perhaps it's, comes down at another area.
Right, there's a ditch along the road, but I would assume that the majority of this water that here, it just sits here. And it either evaporates in the, in the dry weather or ends up in the ground.
So, with that being said, since we have these two pinch points that cuts off wetlands to the north and wetlands to the south, this area that's left over is actually 1.42 acres. So, it's actually, doesn't meet the minimum requirement to be, have a shoreline, shoreline overlay of 100 feet. So, our information basically suggests that this, that this whole area shouldn't be zoned, have an overlay or not. Regarding the, the crossing, so the wetland cross, it looks like it's going to impact approximately... 2,000, 2,800 square feet. And the main DEP has an exemption that allows you to impact up to, but not exceeding 4,300 square feet without needing a permit, some exemption under the main non-natural resource protection act. So, that actually would need review with the DEP. So, I think that's about it. Yeah, we did all the test, we did all the test pits for the septic.
And the log should be in your packet.
We did all these, some of them aren't shown. But these, these test pits, they passed with the subservisory floor rules.
So, right now, those would be in the flood zone?
No, these, they're all outside, all of these are outside of a flood zone.
Yeah.
This, this one here is the only one that's within that flood zone. It wouldn't be allowed under the current rules. But once again, in a couple years, it disappears. They could've put one there if they, if they had to.
Is it, is expected that it'd be as much as a couple of years?
I thought it was supposed to happen sometime this year.
Right, that's what I thought.
What's the process on that?
The state has to approve the maps. And then once the state approves the maps, then the town has, the towns have to vote on the acceptance of those maps.
And the state has not yet approved the maps?
No, they have not.
Do you have any idea when they might?
From what I understand, it's supposed to happen sometime this summer, I thought.
What I found curious was the idea that these houses, when they're built, are going to be, have to be built to certain standards that are inevitably going to become obsolete. And it seems to me that that is wasteful of resources. It's wasteful of the applicant's resources, really.
Right, but I, I understand the town has their ordinance enacted the way it is right now. And we're gonna have to honor those requirements. But what I'm saying is if they don't sell these two lots for two years and this zone disappears, then there's not gonna be any restrictions on the foundations, where they can be elevation wise.
Provided that's, provided that's clear at the outset.
Correct, we'll put a note on the plan that says that if the future proposed FEMA flood zone maps are approved by the town as they are drafted currently, then that flood zone will disappear and those requirements will disappear with them.
Okay, I didn't see that in the materials. So, that's what, that was the basis of my question, why wouldn't you ask for that? Okay, you're planning to...
This is kind of an overblown sketch plan here. But we wanted, I wanted to make sure that the board had plenty of information to look at. I didn't want any surprises down the road. So, that's why all this information is presented to you as it is.
Your question. Years ago, and I'm not sure if this is pertinent to or not, but years ago, somebody had bought some land on Brimstone Road there, and they were going to develop it, and they never have. And they had come to the planning board. Do you know if the former owners, okay, have been to the planning board with building something? I, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out as a thought or anything else because years ago, there was...
Yeah, just a little bit of...
Huh? That's why, that's why I'm asking the question. And at that time, one of the reasons they, because they had one driveway that was gonna serve everybody. And the thing was that, at the time, it was too wet to build at the time. That's why I'm asking you that. It does look familiar, do you know what I mean?
That's what it looks like to me, is this one driveway. Maybe five, six years ago, maybe seven?
I don't...
The remainder of these, these three lots here will all have driveways up to the flood zone.
Yeah, but I mean, why are two of this?
Yeah, I have, I have no idea.
That's why, that's why I'm asking. I mean, and we can't, tonight, our planner's not here, so we can't have him do...
I mean, I've, I've met with Tad.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying...
He never made any comments that somebody...
This was before him.
Oh, okay.
This was before him, so he... All right, I don't remember. Dan's been gone longer than five years.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was Dan.
So, I mean, that's the only reason I was inquiring. I mean, because it looked familiar. And then, except for this one lot here, because that was originally, I think, part of that at one time.
That's correct, this, this was part of this project.
Yeah, I mean...
So, just to help me be clear about this, you, this proposal will allow you to, to build according to the current regulations, wetlands and shoreline protection. So, if, if it, if it never does change, for whatever reason, it still will move forward?
That's correct. Then these two ones here would have to be built one foot above the flood zone. So, that means they would be elevated.
Okay, that's up to what buys it to do that. All right, good, so we're kind of, I don't, like, we'll have to go by what the current regulations are and move forward. And I don't know if, all of a sudden, it gets approved in the meantime, then you can, you can switch, you could switch gears.
Right.
And, and, and create a new plan.
But as Jens, as this commented, we're probably gonna put some notation on the plan that says, in the future, if this disappears and those regulations or restrictions that are on the lots now will disappear as well.
Then that would obviously be coming back to us.
Right, so we have to amend that, yeah, that makes sense. Because that gives them both in and out ways of going at it, because it's already noted.
And my point is that when it, it was a previous proposal, it was, I didn't know why they pulled, pulled out. Maybe it was because they found it too wet. Maybe it was because of the current...
It may be because of the flood zone, because that flood zone was, is pretty, it takes up most of the lot. And, and if you're gonna develop any of that to speak of, restrictions on the housing, they're all gonna be required. Flood insurance, because they would be in a flood zone. So, the expenses that went along with it probably were costing very good.
Yeah. Plus, there was something too about timber cutting there. That was under the previous, I mean, I thought. I mean, I'm just saying...
But whatever those issues were at the time, it's, you know, you haven't seen anything...
I have no idea what those issues would have been.
No, you're, you're developing it on your own as present.
Right. And I think we've addressed, we've addressed all the environmental issues. We've shown them on the plan, so the owner's aware of what's, what's on the site.
Maybe the only question I have, you're going to put a note on the plan that says if conditions in the future change, you don't have to come back before us. But this is a subdivision, I don't think you can put that note on the plan. I think you have to come back before us.
Well, if it's a, if it's an environmental restriction such as this, alls we're saying is that, you're, you're saying that if, if that is removed, then those lots don't have to meet those current standards.
But I'm not sure that we can say that. And that, and I don't know, we might be able to, I'll have to look through the ordinance to see if we can. I'm just, I'm not sure. I don't think we've ever been asked that question before.
No.
I think they tend to look into it, because it just saves a lot of resources all the way around.
And it would be, and if we can put it on, I have no problem putting it on, I just wanna make sure that it can.
Now, we have to, that could also go on the deed as well, to, to property to be recorded, because it may not look at.
That's correct. I mean, that, that'll be part of the next phase, if the Arundels are gonna have any covenants or restrictions and all that stuff, all that stuff will be supplied to the board. So, you get to read those and review them.
We're just throwing out points possibly.
Yeah.
I mean, you said it last minute.
Give us something to look at. The next thing that we have to look at is a sidewalk.
Yeah, one of the things that, Mr. Chair, that Tad is noting that we, or kept the sidewalk inspection and established contour interval. I have to confess, I don't know, I don't understand what he means by that.
But we're already showing two foot contour interval on yet. There's not really any need to show anything greater than that.
That's why we need Jamie. That's why we need Jamie. Jamie would know what, what that means.
Okay, all right.
Typically, USGS is 20-foot, some funds allow five-foot. This is two-foot, light R, it's accurate, it's the standard.
Two foot is too precise for us.
I mean, it's more than, it's more than good enough for what's happening here. I mean, if you're constructing roads, we'll go in, surveys will go in and actually top over the corridors to make sure that that two-foot contours are good enough. Typically, they, the engineers will get one foot out of what we supply them.
So, in this preliminary submission, you're actually, you're submitting a contour interval that is, equals or exceeds what you could expect in a formal submission.
Correct.
So, you're not gonna back off of that when you...
Okay.
Okay, well, one little curiosity, the, the, you have, you're showing the site of, of the building. If, if the shoreline does change, or the flood zone changes, they could probably move it, or you'd be willing to keep them where they are?
Right, these are just conceptual. And note, if there's not a note there, there will be a note that these are subject to change.
Okay, I guess that's what I'm...
I mean, theoretically, if that house can go anywhere is within that area.
Well, you would, you would show us on the final plan where the house is actually held, correct?
A building envelope, right?
Typically, no, the, the envelope will be there and that's it.
Okay.
We do show these conceptual, but there's a note on the plan that they conceptualize like a change.
Great, yeah, so then, possible, okay, it says possible house location. But when, sometimes they're, they're specific, that's where it would be.
Right, this is a multifamily development condo, you know, quads, triplexes, yeah, those buildings are placed on the ground and that's where they're gonna be. And those will be, that's what you guys would approve.
I find this entire concept interesting. It's a subdivision, there's no roots.
Right.
Works out well.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to schedule a sidewalk.
The other thing is, the other thing is, under the notes, under the notes, in addition to that, turn around, we have to look at the snowpack to even be able to get in there.
Then I would suggest we push it out before...
Oh, no, I'm just...
Oh, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
Because I'm not taking snowshoes.
I think because of the snowpack right now, we should probably look at four weeks from today.
That's what I recommend, I mean, always end it in April, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah.
Wear your muck boots.
Yeah, it'd be wet.
What's, um, Thursday meeting in April?
The 12th and the 26th. We'd have to do it on the 12th. The 26th is, is more than 30 days away.
But this is still preliminary?
I know, but the, the ordinance requires a sidewalk within 30 days of today. Of the pre-app. Of the preliminary. This is, this is...
We're not gonna have snow on the ground on the April 12th.
I hope not.
No, okay, let's go, let's go with the 12th. I'm moving, just gotta look for the 12th.
6 o'clock? 6 o'clock, yeah.
And what typically would the board like to see for the sidewalk, or marking on the ground?
I have to stake out the road.
No, driveway, driveway.
Okay, driveway.
How accessible is it to show where the property lines would be? I don't know how much overgrowth and frummage there is without...
Without getting in here and doing all kinds, we can, we can flag these lines probably in a couple hundred feet. Is that gonna be good enough to you guys?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not...
Just an idea of cutting there.
Okay, there's this line here, which is a little bit of a...
Yeah, so that should be good.
Is that, that, that line with, for the clearing line, I mean, that's your proposal?
That's correct. There's a part, there's an area in the, in the ordinance that, you know, in the rural areas, the town wants to see the limits of the cutting. So, we decided that we can pause it there, we wanna, we wanna protect this wetland area, so we're, we're sticking cutting on these lots.
Of course, you also wanna be able to say, let it breathe instead of...
It'd be the first time we've seen that.
You know what I'm saying? You don't wanna have it overgrowth, so you have non-shedding.
We have a motion on the floor for April 12th. It has been made in second, Jens made it, and...
Was that on Friday? Thursday night?
The Thursday night, April 12th at 6:00 PM.
I don't know, man. Go for it if I can, I'll let you know.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
If you have it. Gentlemen, we look forward to seeing you.
All right, thank you very much.
And we should, we should have an answer on that whole question about what happens if the zone changes.
That'd be great. I know that the CEO was looking into more given the state is gonna be approving their maps.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Okay. Item number two.
Okay.
Preliminary resubdivision plan, a proposal to resubdivide a six-lot cluster subdivision plan on 20.778 acre parcel located on the current Ledge Cliff Drive, formerly tax map four lots 24 and 25B in the AR district. Access to the resubdivided lots will be provided by a 1,340-foot-long commercial road called Ledge Cliff Drive and relocated on the adjacent 30.48 acre parcel, tax map four lot 23 in the ARD district. Phil Labby is the owner of map four lots 24 and 25B, and the applicant, Paul Gadbois-Peepe, is the applicant's agent. Take it away, Paul.
Yes, I see Tad gave us some lengthy comments for you guys to look at. In a way, it's pretty minor as far as I'm concerned, the setbacks, you know, Tad said you had setbacks showing on the plan and you have to go all chasing 12.3 acres, 12.01 acres. I did reconfigure the plan a little bit to make the same 12.35 acres over space, and then we have the sidewalk, that is insignificant, it's not insignificant. It was really so minor that I didn't think it was a huge deal either way, but so, we did take a look at that. This project has received the DEP's, or its law order approval for the project. And that's based on, creating a pond, the bottom of the road, so the road, McCaffrey Knacks on the road, and setting this little infiltration pond. I guess the biggest thing this evening is, obviously, I'd like to determine the application complete, because probably never did that, I don't think in the past.
There's nothing...
Certainly, I'd like to keep the application complete. You have scheduled, I guess, to do it, to get it complete, you have to work on, I asked for a waiver request for the sidewalk, so, obviously, waiver request for the sidewalk, to me, deem the application complete. I do need all preliminary requirements, I went through the preliminary requirement checklist, of course, this project has received final plan approval in the past, so, nothing's really changed, it's still this homeless, dark, still, I entered the soil surveys, still the test pits, wet inundation, just accepting that relocating the road, revise the PBR for DEP. A couple of things that, so we do have DEP's PBR law order approved. Haven't gotten the NDOT entrance permit at this time. Phil wanted to hold off on it, because for some reason, this project doesn't move forward, Phil decides to pull out of the project and at this point, see what he, kinda at that point where he wants to do that. We don't wanna redo an entrance permit, we have an existing entrance permit correctly right now for the old location of Ledge Cliff Drive. So, we don't wanna confuse the two by having another one done and then going back to the original. So, we're leaving that for final. And we will certainly apply for the NDOT permit, and have that for final review. Ms. Rivers?
Paul, question. Can you apply for it and state that if for some reason, the existing stays in effect until it goes that way? I, I don't know how to state... it goes that way? I, I, I don't know how the state works, that's my question is.
Doesn't really have that in the application form, the application forms pretty specific, show the location, show the site distance, they approve it. I mean, I think Ben's already talked to D O T and they actually would have approved the entrance at this location, because of course Ben would have to put the entrance on his property, not on Phil's property, so I mean, this is a win-win for everybody, we're actually having two entrances, um, you know, we think two hundred feet of each other, we have one entrance and this will be, the entrance here will be somewhere in the middle of what B D F holding was, was opposing and the one that we have now, so. So I don't see that gonna be a problem, the, the, N D O T would be glad to see this happen instead of having two separate entrances. Um, so I don't see that being a problem, we'd like to keep that for the final.
But wouldn't that also, where it is now, would actually eliminate two openings? The one that turned, Ben would have and then the existing one.
Correct, well, Ben doesn't have one yet, but.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm going at the idea, it would have looked, that would, one would eliminate two.
Or look at one.
The future one and the present one.
Correct, that's correct. Um, I know Tad, kinda going down his checklist, Tad, uh, seems to think that, um, this project will not be very, I guess his words were, impediment to vehicle access to be, I mean, land, especially we have some large curb, some large cuts here, so, you know, Ben to come in without doing any large curb cuts, you know, he gets Ted to come in here and spur, like we originally talked about, I'm off here, we'll spur the little mini, uh, one acre subdivision or, or, or commercial subdivision. Like Tad pointed out, it'd have to be just another good access point, there's no curb cuts, no ledge cuts here. Ben realizes that, and for some reason, we need an extra curb cut and this location, then we're just gonna have to put whatever it is and deal with the ledge removal at that time, so he's well aware of it. You know, as far as Ben's concerned, it's a lot more cost effective to share this road and spend a little extra money that it might take to last through a ledge section to get to his main land than to have his own road community, uh, construct his own road, which is definitely still cost effective to remove some of that ledge, give us access. So he's well aware of that, and I know Tad made that one of his comments. As far as the, uh, drains, again, we did get the drain by rule, so we should be all set with that.
Did I understand you correctly, so it's all draining down to the detention pond?
No, there is some stormwater coming down back to, to catch bases, discharge to a wetland right in this area. We took that into consideration, they're required to catch knives underneath for this area. So we give what, this issue, this, this had catch bases at the point where we could, this catch was required, not in purpose.
I, I didn't think I had understood that correctly, I was like, are you gonna get this stuff coming from right outside? Okay.
Yeah, um, so I think the next thing Tad was concerned with was, oh, the future development of the B here property, so obviously, you know, at this point, DEP doesn't like large infiltration filter ponds, they like smaller ones, so this is pretty much maxed out of the size, so you really can't add anything else to it. You can't really, shouldn't really expand it, the DEP doesn't like large filter ponds, they like smaller filter ponds, floats, the side rush, I don't know, run by a pre- one. So when we go, uh, we just probably will have to have a, either filter pond in this area, the drains in that direction, maybe another filter pond in here, if we have a massive, uh, construction in this area, maybe another filter pond in this side, so we have to add filter ponds once we know what, uh, Ben wants to do this property. So chance that I have it tapped into that one will never happen.
But it, since that, that is all on, on Ben's property, so.
Yes, so you know, we're gonna, we're gonna put in easements across this, like Ted suggests, obviously. So Phil will have an easement and Ben will have an easement to use it, um, and if the town wants to own that easement, because they want to accept the road soon, because we have the town.
And would, um, the development on the other property ever need to tap into that detention pond, or would that be too small?
Those property, you mean?
No, on, yeah, on Ben's.
No, we, we, we wouldn't.
You'd have to, you'd have to keep that separate.
Now, that dependent, uh, pond, okay, would, this may sound too far fetched, but that wouldn't be a fire pond, would it?
No.
Because it's too far.
No, it, it doesn't hold water, Marty, it's both an infiltration.
And naturally drained.
Correct.
Okay.
It's got other drain pipes in it, filter media, so it doesn't hold water.
Well, that's, I would just, I mean, usually when you think of ponds, you know, but I mean, uh, that was why I was just inquiring.
Uh, Tad, you have another comment about, uh, process, I guess you have probably Kate's butter development because of these large ledge cuts, um, and groundwater coming through the ledge, or this is pretty much the top of the the watershed, so I can't imagine there being all water coming through that area. Um, certainly, I think the ordinance requires underdrain, so we can actually put in, uh, some underdrain. You know, pipe, we can catch bases to, how to collect that groundwater and make sure that we don't have any issues with it, so that's something I made a note of, we can do that, obviously, for final.
So Tad, you're just thinking what, it would, it would come down from Kate's butter, down across one eleven and then.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we're at the top of watershed here, ledge cuts, you know, we're not like we're down low and there's a lot of water coming through.
The road is, the road is going, it's cutting through it though.
These are the high ones, yeah, it is cutting through, yes, but, once you do that and the water, the water comes through the ledge cuts, then it's pretty much, it's season. Uh, we can certainly, uh, put underdrain to remove that issue.
But don't forget on Kate's, don't forget on Kate's butter, okay? The fact is, on that property, there was so much natural springs, okay? Water was running out before they, before they even ta, uh, did a well, I made a, on the ground.
Okay, that's, that's not gonna be the case in this project right here.
I know Kate's butter.
Yeah.
I know there well was in excess of three hundred feet deeper and they've got well in excess of a hundred gallons a minute and it overflows twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
Keeps that little pond full. And we don't wanna impact that.
No, I mean, it's too far down the street.
And then he wants a staff recommended period of stormwater, I have no problem with that. Certainly, that's my mission as far as I'm concerned. Um, curving, you know, Tad thought I had twenty-five foot radius here, that is a thirty foot radius as per cul-de-sac.
It is thirty foot, okay.
I will add, I will leave it as thirty feet, um, but it is thirty. Um, the ordinance requires granite curve any less than fifty foot radius, so technically we'd have to put granite curve from here where it comes to the change point and granite curve at kind of change point. I don't think Phil's, uh, you know, obviously he doesn't have any money, but I don't think that we have any, uh, I think there will be some, providing that it'll be a nice entrance with industrial block. I think that's probably a, uh, something that we might ask a way before, try that sort of, so we will install granite curving at that entrance around the thirty foot radius. The only thing that I don't wanna do, and I know this is a forty foot interior radius in the cul-de-sac, I have a sixty-five foot exterior radius for the cul-de-sac, so technically we'd have to curve that island. I would rather not put granite curve in that avenue, but, uh, I, I don't really think that's super necessary, but I guess I'll have to listen to the board and.
Now, the distance, the distance from the cul-de-sac to the pond is how far?
This is.
Roughly?
Well, cul-de-sac two pond, this is one inch is fifty, so from which, from the end, from.
Well, I'm just saying, the purpose of, of, of curving over that way or whatever.
Would just be the interior, not the exterior, because we're, we're exceeding the sixty-five foot radius. So it would be granite curving on the interior of that island.
Because it's forty foot radius.
I thought you, it's over.
No.
It's fifty.
It's fifty.
Yeah, it's like in fifty or something.
Well, you're gonna have enough granite.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna be over fifty, or it has to be curved.
Well, and it also says in that ordinance, or allowed by the board, unless it's.
Does it?
Requires or allowed by the board.
I think that's a type one, a type five granite asphalt curve.
Reference.
Uh, section one six two.
Yeah, page, well, page six, I guess. Of the, uh, street design standards.
I don't have the street design standards, I have the subdivision and I have the.
Yeah, the street design standard basically says granite curbing shall be installed, uh, whatever. It answers by two is curbing shall be installed, well, all curves shall be vertical except, except when type five slope curves are specifically requested or allowed by the board. The type five is a different type of mold, so instead of the, it's sort of the sloped asphalt curve versus the vertical asphalt curve.
So, so just the type five, it would be the asphalt one and?
Correct, type one is granite.
Okay, okay, two types.
So.
What, what, what were you planning on for, for the rest of the curving?
I need to be the curb detail, I was gonna use what they call the gate guard curb, it's only like, it's, it's kind of a, it's better for plows, it's not a vertical six inch curb, it kinda slants up.
Yeah.
Two six inches, but it's better to slant to it, so plows don't technically take it out as easy, so that's what I was proposing for this project, right here. No, you know, so same price, so, uh, but I think that's a better curb than asphalt curb, it does say.
Right, vertical curb, uh, vertical bituminous curb will not stand up to a snowplow. It'll be gone, sections of it will be gone every year. Sloped curb, the plow will ride up over it. It'll scar it, but it won't wipe it completely out.
It just sharpens the blade.
Well, it, it does appear, uh, looking at the, at this section, one six two K four, the street design construction ordinance only permits vertical curving, type five or slope curving has to be specifically permitted by the planning board.
Correct.
So if you gentlemen want, we can allow them to do that, because it's not, it's not, it, the ordinance itself says that we can make a change to it.
It's odd that, that it would give, say it's required unless we don't require.
I don't ever, to the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Where have we ever required any curving like this before? I don't ever remember.
Tad wrote that it, it's.
I'm just saying, we never, we never.
Told us in the last couple of years like this, and, and may, do we add this to them?
I, I've never seen it before, that's why I'm even asking it, because.
I don't know, I, 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 I don't know, but the solution is built in, it does allow us to say that, that you can use, uh.
Correct, I understand that, but my question, my question was, where we've had any other road, which it will be, or anything else, or development, or anything else along that way, we've never had a form of curving. That's where I'm going at.
It was buried and we never caught it before.
I don't remember.
I, believe me, in all the years.
Yeah. But even, Marty, even if that were the case, and we erred in not allowing it, that doesn't justify us going forward and not making sure that the ordinance is met. And in this case, it allows us.
Correct.
To, to put the other stuff in, so I think that it would be appropriate.
I, I understand that, but my, my point was only that. We never had, even recently in other developments, uh, subdivisions or anything else, within the last year or so, okay? We've never had to have anything about curving. That's where my.
But I, my, my point.
Or is, I don't know if it's by, but I understand where we have the leeway, but I'm just saying why all of a sudden now is curving an issue?
We have leeway with respect to the.
Type.
For the, for the slopes, and that's on the exterior, correct?
Correct.
On the exterior, the exterior curving.
Technically where it's not larger than fifty foot radius, right?
Where's?
Any place, any place that has a larger than fifty foot radius, so we're providing supposed curving, uh, pretty much the entire road.
Okay, but on the interior of a cul-de-sac where it's less than fifty feet.
Yes.
Where it looks to me like the language is mandatory.
It, it does appear that that inside cul-de-sac has to be granite. Because it says granite shall be used.
Okay, we have built, I dare to say hundreds of cul-de-sacs over the years. There's never been curbed on the inside radius on any cul-de-sac who we've ever built.
Well, almost, it, it almost seems like better off God had it, so.
Absolutely.
Fill in, drain out.
What I can do is probably, uh, remove the inside catch basin grade this down so that this will discharge the door swale and then back my pond, they might not need curbing.
Yeah, when, when I look at this, I don't know, you know, it said where the curb radius, I could look at this design and, and make an argument that the curb radius is greater than fifty feet. Because I'd measure it from the outside. I, I don't know, that's.
Where the curb is, is where you measure from.
If, if it's where the curb is, then the inside has to be.
Yeah.
Uh, is, is the forty feet and you'd have to put in.
Now, what about all the, uh, it, it's a rule we may not be able, uh, get over, but is, what about all the designs of where the cul-de-sac was a catch basin? And then, and drain, like you kinda have the drain.
I can look at that if it means, uh, if I can get it to work with the grates, I can maybe put a field inlet right here and get this to discharge and then into the pond, but I have to look at that.
Cause I, I'd be at concern with the water running down that road.
This water that all just drains into the island. My outside curve is still in that, of course, the road's ground, so I have to catch it at this point and bring it to my pond, but I guess I can take a look at that.
Okay, it looks like we really may not have a choice.
And so basically, if I can't make that work, then it's gonna, as far as you're concerned, I need drain.
According to the, they weren't, yes, okay.
That's it. Oh, bad, oh, good. Uh, and again, these are very strict, hearing that show talk, what requirements are. I've never seen anything like this. Really, that's right, five inches of pavement and, you know, it's, it's huge.
This, this is not ours.
I don't know where it came.
The, the street design ordinance is from Board of Selectmen.
Oh, really?
We don't.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I don't know what it was.
You, you, it, it's been out there for a long time, the street design ordinance is something that the Board of Selectmen set up. The planning board has never dealt with that issue.
No, you got to decide what to do with it. I don't, you don't know where it came from.
No.
Right. Somebody took a.
Now, so, what you're just stating, right? I don't ever remember the Board of Selectmen putting anything out to street design.
Tad, Tad has, Tad has told me that the street design ordinance is from the Board of Selectmen, we don't have it in our ordinance.
So how, if it's not in our ordinance, how can we apply it?
Because your ordinance says you gotta build this road in accordance with street design standards, it does say.
But it's not in our ordinance.
Yeah, in your ordinance.
Incorporated reference.
Yes. In your ordinance it says that you have to build it in accordance with a street, and I have no idea where it came from, Phil.
I've been on the board for, I think, six, maybe seven years and the Selectmen's Board has not put out any road standard ordinances.
Phil, uh, Phil, I'm looking at the, at the base of the, uh, ordinance, and it looks like it was last amended in June of, uh, two thousand and eleven. So that may have preceded your time on the board. That may have preceded your time on the board then.
Yeah, it, it would have had to.
Yeah.
Cause I, I, I came on when the, uh, what's his name from the gas station resigned.
Right, okay, I knew what you mean, I can't think of his name.
Rob.
I, I finished his term.
Oh, and now Byron.
Byron, yeah. I finished his term after he resigned. And I went for another three year term, so I've only been on maybe five years.
Yeah, and I, I, like I said, I honestly have no idea, I'd never see, we haven't looked at it because it's not part of the land use ordinance. We, we've always been told that that is something, and the Selectmen have a couple of different ordinances that are not part of the land use ordinance, and that was one of them.
And another one, it's tough, the, the sidewalk, that's the next issue, that's part of the, the street design.
Uh, we remember now, you have to remember this, turn out with sidewalks, okay? When you were doing a development a long time ago, and turn out, the sidewalks was brought up then and it was decided not to do it, okay?
I can't believe you remembered that far back, it's ten years.
Well, that's minor.
That's scary, Marty. Yeah, you're absolutely right. I, I proposed to put, to put sidewalks in the subdivision up there and you guys said.
No.
No, we don't want it.
Because the fact is, turn out, at the time, the road commissioner and everybody else didn't want it either.
We still don't.
This, this whole street design thing is part of the meeting that we've tried to, to get between the Board of Selectmen and us so that we can address. What, I don't think anybody really knows what's going on in that issue because there are some, we're being asked to address things like private roads and private radius and it's all part of the street design. So we need to get together with you guys to find out what's going on.
There's been quite a lot of talk at our meetings about getting together with a committee on road designs. And that always seems to be something more important to be done.
Yep.
And, and we do need to do that because I haven't talked to anybody in town that doesn't think that our road designs are too strict for a country town.
Again, that, that issue is.
We need to look at that.
Yeah, cause that hit the tide most of the time. We, we, we don't make the rules and we have to apply it.
Mr. Chair, under industrial road or the else, give me a perfect example. Enterprise drive. It has a cul-de-sac bigger than that.
It's not just enterprise. Is that still private? It's private.
It's still private.
I'm sorry, enterprise is not private. This is.
Yeah, the enterprise is private. It's turn out, but, but this is still private. There was a cul-de-sac there and the, uh, curbing or anything else was not required. And that was still being done by two thousand and eleven.
Technology drive.
No, technology drive is where a run the machine shop is. I'm talking about.
And that's private what you're talking about.
Yeah, and this still is private.
But technology drive must be public road.
No.
You're designing this to be accepted by the town?
No, when designing it to town standards as a private road, maybe sometime in the future, if the design meets town standards, we might ask to have it taken over. But we're building this as a private road. Ted stated in here that we have asked for, to be turned over as soon as it's built. That is not correct. That's not what we're asking for.
It could, it couldn't be turned over until the subdivision was complete anyway, could it?
I think, no, I think you're right. And, and at this point, there's no actual intent asked the town to take it over. That's in the future, maybe.
Does it matter whether it's a private or gonna be public?
That's why I'm saying is if this ordinance we haven't seen, okay?
I think that's what's been getting us in trouble.
But, but I'm giving you examples where recently we've had, and, and no standards about granite curbing or anything else was even applied. Why all of a sudden now is granite curbing being done now?
One of the things might be because it's, this is in a, a growth zone, it's in the business zone.
So is Route one. That's business and then turn out.
Hang on for a guy.
Been in the growth zone for thirteen years. Noticing, they, he's a part of everything.
Well, we can waive certain street design and construction standards in conformance with the variance waiver provisions of Article fourteen of subdivision.
It's Article fourteen. Any variance waiver of the provisions that, that, as a town, shall be decided by the Board of Selectmen.
So I guess you guys can answer, but hats go in front of the Board of Selectmen also.
For waivers, uh, we make written findings of fact that there are special circumstances. The applicant demonstrates performance standards, uh, have, have been met or will, will be met. Health, public safety, welfare are protected. The waivers do not affect or nullify the purpose of the comprehensive plan. And then it repeats itself in fourteen two. But it does, it does appear based on what Jens has found that it is possible to waive that. Which is contradictory to the language that says that you shall, but it says, it says we can waive it.
Yeah, but like I said, we're not bitter. I mean, when they got granted all over everything.
Would that be for any of your requirements, move requirements? It says may waive, may vary or waive certain street design and construction standards. It doesn't say which one.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it doesn't say which, it says.
That sounds discretionary to me.
It does.
It has to have a basis. We'll need to, maybe look at that.
Like I said, if we don't have it in front of us.
Right. But it's, you know, we need to have findings of fact that would justify the waiver. But if we have those findings of fact, then we could say that yes, for example, the interior curbing.
Okay. Also the granite curbing at the front because Kate's butter doesn't have granite curbing at the front coming in?
That's a driveway though.
It's still, what is that? It's still a driveway?
No, that's a road.
That's a road. It's, it's subdivision where different properties are.
But, but I mean, from the, from the, the interior curbing, it does sound as if on that, the cul-de-sac, we can waive that curbing.
Yeah, I mean.
Why not do is give us a valid reason as to why we should.
Yeah, make the pitch.
Make, make the pitch.
Come up with a good reason.
If, if, if we accept it, then we can say yes. But that, that appears to be what that ordinance is saying.
One good reason to waive granite curb on the interior of the island is granite curb is very, very good at cutting truck tires. And when a snowplow goes around the, the cul-de-sac, the rear tires.
Always riding.
Cut shorter and they will ride on, on or along that curb and it'll cut tires on a regular basis. That's one good reason.
Okay, yeah.
Sounds like you lost a couple.
All he has. It's just like these roundabouts where they turn out are.
Yeah, they build them with concrete.
Yeah, but.
So, so your trailer and your rear tires can ride right over the concrete with, with no humps and bobs.
Now, here's a question. Here's a question at the same time.
Hang on just for a second. For, for the purposes of this, you have some direction. We, we know what you're looking at. You know what you're looking at. It is something that is waivable. So from a, from the point of view of completeness of the application, that section has been addressed.
And same thing with sidewalks.
We, we're asking to waive the sidewalk entirely.
Sidewalks are required?
Yeah. That's where I'm coming at. This is where we're going.
Can you, can you point, can you point that out?
Oh, yeah.
Point out where the.
One point six, point two, K, four.
One point six, point two, K, four. I don't see where it says sidewalks.
It's in the street design standard on the, it's, uh. Oh, yeah, it's, uh, page four of the street design ordinance. It just says sidewalk width, five feet. For a collective, minor, private way is not applicable. Industrial commercials, five feet.
I'm sorry, Paul, would you tell me the specific, uh, specific reference.
He's, he's actually got the, the street design ordinance.
So it's on, on page, it's been printed on, okay, um, so.
Sidewalks and curbing shall be required within and along the public road frontage of all developments located.
Okay, here it is right here. Yep, right here. So, okay.
If you go back, I think it comes back right here. See where it says sidewalk width?
Yeah, but it, it is a whole section here.
Yes, the sidewalk, that's correct.
Alright.
That goes back and talks about the type of curbing.
Yeah.
It says sidewalk and curbing shall be required within and along. Public road frontage of all developments located in designated growth areas. And for all development for which any part is located within one thousand feet of any school or commercial zone.
And this is a commercial zone?
Yeah.
And I think Ted said this is a public, this is a growth area also, right?
According to the compliance. But it's definitely in the commercial zone.
So is Kate's butter.
Just the chair. One of the things that occurred here is if we have that standard and, um, availability of that same waiver language that allows us to vary or. We gotta think, think about where these people are gonna be doing, doing on the sidewalks and pick this commercial traffic toward the, the one eleven end of it because of those two commercial lots. But beyond that, I don't, it doesn't seem to me of there'd be any good reason for truck traffic to be going up there. And that would. That, I was thinking of that, um, and that, I actually would think it would be a reason to require a sidewalk because it. If some of the, the new development, the other, the abiding property was developed, could be commercially zoned. So there could be some heavy trucks going through there and if there's, there's a residential here, kids walking, riding bikes.
Not on that side of the street.
Which side of the street?
Let's see, I'm talking on Phil's side.
On Phil, on Phil's side, un, unless this is an age restricted community and doesn't allow kids, you're gonna have five families that have kids and they're gonna have to walk down to one eleven to get a school bus. Cause the bus isn't going in there.
Meanwhile, there could be, um, a delivery of, of something to one of the, the properties in business, in the business zone. So you did, of, of all, of all subdevelopments, I've seen this is probably the, the one that seems more needing a sidewalk. Cause it is in the business. If, if that abiding property wasn't potentially gonna be developed, then it would be, I'd be alright with it.
What abiding property?
Those are good points, actually. I didn't really consider what happens with B D F.
Then I would say, if we're looking at the sidewalks, you put the sidewalks on the residential side.
On one side.
On one side and one side only, not on both sides.
Agreed.
Yeah, it doesn't really matter which side it goes on. It's just a matter of which is usually the, the most convenient to construct, but in this case. I haven't really thought about.
I think it would be more convenient on Phil's side simply because there's not gonna be developments through there. But that's, that's just my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Sometimes it depends on.
I think they need to turn, give us a, a reason not to.
The sidewalk would just propose a lot of.
Even at that, I mean, if, we could, we could still can use that and say, the application is still complete. The issue has to be addressed as to whether or not there's a wave of, of any kind. That doesn't have to, that aspect doesn't have to be addressed tonight. Quite honestly, the, about the only thing that I saw in here that for me says that this application is not complete, the ordinance says that you shall have your M D O T permit in hand before we declare the ordinance, before we declare this complete. And we don't have that permit.
Correct. I think the reason you don't have that permit, it's easy enough to get. Paul can deal with that. I told Paul not to ask for an entrance permit until we get this road approved. Conditional on having that permit in hand because I don't wanna give up my entrance permit that I already have. If this goes by the wayside, now I've lost my existing permit and I'd have to reapply. I don't wanna reapply. I have a permit for my existing road. If this road gets approved, it could be conditioned on getting the M D O T permit and producing it to the board. At that point in time, I'd be ready to give up the permit that I already have in hand. But I'm not ready to give that up until this road is approved.
Yeah, I have a question. No, I have a question.
Just out of curiosity, when you go through the preliminary plan checklist, it doesn't say you need to have a permit in place.
Where's that, where, where is it, where do you find that?
I mean, it doesn't say that.
A question.
It's on page, on page twenty-one of the, uh, article final plan for major subdivision. Prior to submission of the final plan application. Hang on. The following approvals shall be obtained in, in writing. Yeah, you know, you might be right.
It's just not part of the preliminary plan application. If you look at the, if you look at, if you look at the final preliminary plan for major subdivisions, you go to that checklist, it's not in there.
What is it?
For final, yes, I would definitely.
This was something that, that Ted had pointed out.
I know he didn't. Doesn't mean he's right.
Well, I won't, I won't argue that.
If you look at the checklist for preliminary plan subdivisions, there's nothing to do with D E P permits, there's nothing to do with N G O T permits.
Now, here's a question that I want to ask you, also at the same time.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Phil.
Wait a minute, he's better aware properly of the board agrees to consider the submission as a final subdivision application. We're not ready for that yet, though.
We're not ready. We're still at preliminary.
Well, here, here's a question to ask Phil. Okay, you still have one person running the trailers, correct?
Right now, yeah.
Yes, okay. Now, at the same time, even if this road goes through, okay? Even if this road goes through as that, somebody's still living in the trailer until they move out. So you would still need the entrance permit to, so they could get in and out of that.
No, the, the entrance permit that I have in hand.
Correct.
Is not for that driveway. It's for my approved subdivision road that I was planning on building.
Yeah, okay. But, but still, is that the same driveway, isn't it?
It is not.
Because, because that, the, then if that's the case, that was moved farther over, eh, along the property line, was it not?
Yes. If this, if this road gets approved, whichever road we build.
Yeah.
That driveway will be eliminated and will come out on one of these two roads.
But the one that you have approved is more or less the property line, not where the, the tenant lives.
Correct.
Okay, but that was farther over, running along the property line. Yeah.
Yeah.
And just a quick thing on sidewalks. I'm a commissioner of a private road in Kennybunk and a few years back, we turned the top half into a cul-de-sac and it's now owned by the town or maintained by the town. We were forced to put in a sidewalk and we're kind of having the boonies. And it's the biggest pain in the butt for the town to get their sidewalk sweeper out there and maintain that sidewalk. Kids are walking down the middle of the road all the time because that sidewalk's constantly covered in dirt or, or just unkept by the town.
Town is going to rather plow it.
Yeah, it's a.
No.
Town doesn't have a sidewalk.
Right, yes they do.
Yeah.
Do we really?
Yeah, look at the bridge.
We have one sidewalk.
Yeah, you go over the bridge.
Sidewalk and rumble.
Yeah.
And it's right here over the turnpike bridge.
That's it.
Down to the school entrance.
That's it.
That's the only sidewalk that I know of.
That's what I'm saying. But the other thing is, question is on that cul-de-sac, okay? As Phil was speaking, is a cul-de-sac the same thing as a roundabout?
No, no.
Would a roundabout work down there for the tires and the snow and?
The roundabout comes more than one access.
You need to have.
I'm just saying. Yeah, the, the.
The roundabout has multiple entrances to.
Okay, I realize we don't have multiple exits and entrances, but I'm saying the, the design, the design laying flat.
The design on the cul-de-sac could and should be the same as the design. On the roundabout, except, except for the concrete apron.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Well, we, Roger brought up an interesting point. In the notes that we have from Ted, it says that the first issue the planning board should consider is the procedure that this re-subdivision should follow. Under normal circumstances, a new subdivision would have a two-step process of preliminary and final review. However, in this case, this is a new re-subdivision with change. Do we wanna proceed as a, with a final subdivision process or required Phil to, to go through the two-step process?
It's not all that much extra work to go through the two-step process anyways.
I think, I think we really need to be, this two, two-step process.
Yes. Okay. You know, you're not ready for the final right now anyways.
Well, until we.
I'm not.
That's.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I don't agree with this reapplication. I'm already have approved subdivision with an approved road. So I'm not reapplying for a subdivision.
Phil, I'm on the same page you are. Phil, I'm on the same page you are. I think, but the, the, the town planner brought up the notes of how do we handle this particular situation.
Ideally, in my opinion, be this evening, application complete. Get us preliminary plan approval because we haven't met all the preliminary guidelines tonight. Schedule a public hearing, we'll sound like you guys in a scheduled public hearing. And then after the public hearing, hopefully, if no one shows up, we have all that ducks and roll to the final that night. So we're not even taking that for time.
He'll need, he'll need, and
Yes, oh yes, absolutely.
For the final, so you're not ready for that anyways.
He, he will be if, if the road concept is accepted as shown, correct?
Whether it is or not, if he comes in for final, he needs M D O T.
Correct.
For tonight, he's asking.
Tonight, we'll give you preliminary
Tonight, it's whether or not it's a complete application.
I think it would be green light for you to go.
Hopefully, complete application, approve the preliminary plans.
Yeah, I think so. But we need to have the board's approval to waive the sidewalk. Because the sidewalk creates a whole new D E P application. And it also creates considerable additional ledge blasting and removal to get the proper width to do what we gotta do. And effectively adds seventy-five thousand dollars for a project, which is close to a killer.
I'm, I'm not averse to leaving those because, yeah, you, I, I think you're going to have foot traffic on the road because of the residential subdivision, people are gonna be locking down. And like I said, I, I don't think the school bus will come up.
Not on a private road.
Not up. So, you know, the kids are gonna have to walk down, which is why I think a sidewalk would be a good idea. But realistically, how much use is that sidewalk gonna get? It's not, you're not gonna have a neighborhood full of people walking around on that sidewalk.
You know, Mr. Chair, I wonder if, how would the applicant would feel about having simply a walking trail that loops around the common area to provide a place for people to walk. It doesn't address the kids needing to walk down against the school bus at one eleven. But this doesn't strike me as the kind of road that's gonna lend itself to people going out for a nice walk just to down to one eleven. That's where they stop. They're not gonna go walking down one eleven.
I, I agree.
But it would be nice for them to have some area to walk on, maybe a walking trail or just around the
We can make that a suggestion, but we can't.
Unfortunately, though, that, that's the walk, it, it, it looks like it would be a good idea, but think of that, that ledge is, is up twenty feet high.
I'm talking about around the, around the residential lots.
Like I said, I, you know, that, that's a nice idea that, that the applicant might wanna be considered, but we don't have anything within our ordinance that could require him to do that.
That's why I asked him, by directing my question to him, so how he feels about that.
We could look at it, depending on what kind of a walking path we're talking about.
I, I guess the bottom line also would be, if Phil does not wanna build a sidewalk, certainly, you know, it's gonna be a private road. Do we have to build a sidewalk if we're into this? As a, if he wants to take the chance, it's gonna be a private road. If the residents wanna petition the board selecting five years from now, six or ten years from now, and this is all built out, the board's likely to say no, obviously. Or they may say, you know, something
The town meet it one way or the other.
I mean, maybe. I just, obviously, it's a chance that Phil would be taken. I don't know if he wants to take that chance or just build the sidewalk, but
The road commissioner's got anything to say about it? He doesn't want the sidewalks.
Well, you know what I mean? And, and in my quite frank opinions, you guys aren't gonna plow this in the winter. Just want to really need it, because kids walking on the sidewalk and getting to the bus station in the snow.
Wait a minute, let me ask you this question realistically, okay? Where do the kids walk anyway? Everybody has to give them a ride. They can't walk.
Oh yeah, no one, a private parent is driving to the end of the road, right?
Well, there's a minimum, minimum age where there has to be a parent.
Oh, you?
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
But there is one, right?
The only time the kids walk around today is if they're doing it in the mall. I mean, for them to go one point, point, one side of the street to the other is a major
We, so, it's good on we. We have, but the sidewalk, though, is, is three conditions. One is where it's required. One is that it's in a designated growth area.
Right.
Or it's within a thousand feet of a school, or it's in a commercial zone. And this is, this means two out of three are required. So, so I, I don't know how we, we can still waive it.
Turn it over to the board to select them. It's our prerogative.
I, I agree, Mike, based on what Jen pointed out earlier, it does appear to be our prerogative. Even though this says that you shall do it, that one says you can waive it, so.
But, but the fact is, they still have to give reasons for waiving, which we do not have. If they had, if they were aware of this beforehand, they would have become prepared with waivers in hand.
And again, that's not required for preliminary plan approval because that's a waiver.
Correct.
Prior to final, we're gonna come up with some sort of documentation and whether you guys approve that or not. Again, that's, you know, it's gonna be decided at final, but Phil and I will discuss those, those issues. But I guess the bottom line is that final could just be a private road, not a sidewalk. Probably not, right? Still, you should build a, yeah.
Mr. Chair, you wanna consider this complete as
That's the purpose of the, of today.
I mean, they still could come back.
Ask for the waiver, you guys have denied the waiver and for the sidewalk and, you know. Right now, it's a completeness.
But from a completeness point of view, I'm looking at this and I think there are some informational things that we need to get together. You have Tad's notes on it.
Right, right.
On page, on page four, he talks about there being several informational and submission deficiencies that we need to correct and waivers and other issues that the board has to rule on before deeming the application complete.
Um, I think he's wrong. If you go through that preliminary plan checklist, I've satisfied all the requirements on that preliminary plan checklist. So where does Tad say that?
Deficiencies.
It's, it's on the bottom of page four.
Where's your checklist, Paul?
Board application.
Right here.
A board application.
And I think, you know, quite frankly, Tad should have stoked out the deficiency word, but when you go through
Copy that application.
You go through the application, go through those requirements, they're all on the plan. They're all been submitted. Now, whether they're perfect, that's another story. Because you want us to upgrade the homeowners' dogs. You know, we're talking about, we have homeowners' dogs that have been submitted, they gotta be upgraded. They were the old store, the homeowners' dog, they're the private way, maintenance agreement's been submitted.
I do have an issue with item number twelve. I, I will admit that it, it's a complete application. But item number twelve, list any covenant restrictions, easements, bylaws, or association that will become part of any deed. That subdivision has to have it.
He submitted that.
Oh, because it says here, none.
Well, you have, you have a maintenance agreement and there's not any covenants or restrictions for the lots. The lots, not putting any restrictions on the lots.
There's, it's not a homeowners' association or anything along those lines?
Maintenance of the open space. Period. And how to deal with the individual lots.
Just a home maintenance.
No cuts or restrictions on those lots. We're gonna use the zoning, town zoning restriction, you can't jump the vehicles, you know what I mean? But we're not gonna say you have to have a three-car garage or you have to have, not putting any covenants or restrictions on the lots.
I don't know if that would work because most of our subdivisions are supposed to have homeowners' agreements and
We do have a homeowners' association document that he submitted, just as that says it has to be revised.
My, my point on it is here on number twelve, it just says none, as, as if there's not gonna be any.
Yeah.
Yeah, not on, on, on the individual lots.
Oh yeah, no, no, but as a group, there will be.
On the, on the open space, the homeowners' association, the maintenance open space.
Okay.
And individual lots will have no restrictions, no covenants placed on those lots.
Okay, I think you're right, Paul, though. I'm looking at the, the list of requirements.
Yeah, I mean, I went through the checklist and I submitted it. I mean, this, all that information out here, we acted on final plan approval.
But we are going for final.
No, no, but, but passed.
But it's the way it's written, you'd think this was gonna be final. It's not.
That might be the computer. I think you're saying, if we're gonna consider it final, then you'd have to have all those other things.
Absolutely.
And you're not, yeah, so we don't have to
So all we're doing is determining if the application's complete.
Correct.
I make the motion that we accept the application as being complete.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to deem the application complete. Is there any other discussion?
Yes. There may, just for the record, there may be waivers for, for a point of interest.
But that won't, that won't affect whether it's completed or not.
Shannon?
Yes, sir.
I would like to know tonight if the sidewalk will or will not be waived. Because that can make my decision on whether I build this road or not. Because we're getting to a dollar amount, if this road is very, very close between the two bodies involved, to be not profitable or feasible to do. We are this close to crossing over the dollar amount, we're, we're ready to quit.
And that's one
Sidewalk, the sidewalk and the granite curb could very likely make the difference whether this road goes or not goes.
Go or not go.
Because there's a lot of money involved right there.
So Mr. Labby said, we're gonna have the vote on whether or not the application is complete. And then we'll have a discussion on whether or not we're gonna require sidewalks.
Okay.
Okay? So, we have a motion to accept the application as complete.
It's been seconded.
It's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the application is deemed complete. Now let's discuss what we're gonna do about sidewalks.
Tom brings out his good point. Two out of three requirements require a sidewalk are there.
And, and I, I agree, and, and I hate to sound like a Grinch, but the financial aspect, I don't think carries enough weight to, to ignore the rest of the ordinance, which, which says that you shall put them in there.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
But it also says that we can waive it and it also has to go to the selectmen's, the selectmen's jurisdiction.
It says that we can waive it if we have, if we can have a findings of fact that justify it. And I, I do not believe that financial considerations justify anything.
I don't.
And that's just my point.
Okay, but the other fact is, to my point also is, we have never at all previously commercial, non-commercial, along the way, sidewalks have not been required.
And I can only repeat what I said before. The fact that we didn't do it in the past is not justification for not following what the ordinance says.
You know, it, it's not that we don't wanna pay for the sidewalk. In, in fact, we're going above and beyond with this road to, to make it as complete and, and to standards as we can with the five inches of pavement and whatnot. Um, it's just the financial cost of adding those things makes it, the road design, the value just doesn't work anymore. Is, what he's gaining isn't enough gained anymore if we're putting in these sidewalks. And what I'm getting isn't enough gained anymore either. So now, we do act at him having his less than, less than gray lots and us having two curb cuts off.
Can I ask, hey, I, I have some thoughts about this. I'm not really We've been talking about sidewalks, I think, uh, on the basis of safety concern that Tom has brought up, right?
Yeah.
The real danger here is when, when they're down at one eleven, where all the traffic is waiting for the bus. I don't think the danger exists along the way to get there. I think that's where it is. And that suggests to me less of a need for sidewalk. And as a practical matter, I think most parents aren't gonna just allow their kids to walk down toward a road that has that kind of traffic. They're gonna be with them, or they're gonna ferry them down in the car and sit there in the car and wait for them. You know, with the child in the car. And that's what I see when I drive around in Renault on my way to work or so forth. I expect it's gonna be the same here. I'm not really convinced that we need a sidewalk to serve the possibility of one or two families who might have kids. And maybe no kids in that, in this residential area. But if there are some, I, I really doubt that
They're not gonna go hiking all the way up.
The, the sidewalk is really justified, given the, the ultimate danger at the end of the road. We can't do anything about it.
You know, with the dead-end street, it's not like a true fair, like, my life. I mean, I think, you know, getting in a, some sort of What happens is if this goes back to the old design, the old design approved our sidewalk. So I mean, we're gonna go back to the old plan, it was approved on the sidewalk. So we're gonna exactly the same scenario. And we're gonna have roads side by side eventually, trying to develop these two properties, so. But that's just something, you know, that's, it's, it's so cost-effective when you end up going back to the old design, the old design didn't have sidewalk. It was approved.
If the sidewalk was really productive, there'd be no problem doing it. When it starts nowhere up in the middle of the woods, goes out to Route one eleven, but has extreme danger for kids. Jen is right. There's gonna be no parent leaving their young people out there waiting for a school bus without supervision.
But his, I'm seeing another demographic they're gonna be using to be. If, if there are people, it could be elderly or it could be a young mother with, just with a baby carriage and just they're trapped in the house. They don't wanna go for a ride to get out for, and get fresh air. Let's go for a little stroll with the baby carriage. And then meanwhile, they have a pretty street, one of the steepest streets in town.
Five percent gray.
Five percent.
Five percent, sorry. It's not that steep.
It's like, it's difficult, it's twelve percent.
But there is, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just say that, what I'm saying, with, being in the, it is gonna be, it is in a business zone and there will be business traffic and maybe not intentionally going down that, that, to the cul-de-sac, but, you know, my fear would be, there would be an accident and it's like, you know, we'd think, oh shit, we should probably, we, we probably shouldn't have done that. But having said that, I, I, I understand it's such a tough cut that to fit that sidewalk in is, is gonna take a lot more, so. I'm seeing both sides.
Just for curiosity, how long is that road from Tempest to Stone, Rockley? I don't know if you might have had that quick, Paul.
You wanna go right back around the cul-de-sac?
Just for the beginning of the cul-de-sac.
Fifteen hundred feet.
Huh?
Fifteen hundred.
Without the cul-de-sac, it's what, twelve?
Well, if you start at the cul-de-sac, it's twelve, and then it's three hundred feet to get around the cul-de-sac.
Well, I'm just saying, so the cul-de-sac is where everybody's
So it's twelve hundred, I guess, if you put a sidewalk.
Twelve to fifteen hundred. I mean, that's a long, long highway. By, and usefulness, no. So. Any motions?
I'm, I'm looking at, at the item on waivers.
Yes, I'm not sure.
Where the board makes written findings of fact that there are special circumstances of a particular parcel proposed to be subdivided, it may waive portions of the submission requirements unless otherwise indicated in the regulations. Now, the regulations contradict each other. Provided the applicant has demonstrated that the performance standards of these regulations and the criteria of the subdivision statute have been or will be met. The public health, safety, and welfare are protected and provided the waivers do not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the comprehensive plan, the land use ordinance, or these regulations.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Okay, for example, standards they're going through is, is the five inch or whatever else on, for the road, load, okay? Uh, Enterprise Drive, a rundown machine shop, okay? Then that is a commercial road or whatever, and no sidewalks, and and there was no set standard for even the amount of coverage of the five-inch thickness or whatever, okay? And they're going beyond to meet that requirement. So, I mean, just for justification there, of exceeding as to what you just read.
That doesn't negate the point of the mistake in the past, justifies creating another mistake today.
Well, examples the other day, too, when we had run the machine shop, okay? Even in notes or anything else.
But here's, here's what, what I'm afraid of, is, is the next application would say, well, you're letting.
Well, you already got one.
Go, and that's all, you know, do we, do we never make a scan? What, what I'm not sure is what our, what our right is to waive it. I don't have, I didn't bring my street.
It doesn't really say, and it, it says that we can, under certain, we can waive certain items, but it doesn't say what those items are.
You want to, you want to, you gentlemen want to take a look at it? The line?
Yeah, just.
Based on what?
Same thing you showed.
Yeah, that's it.
What pages are we on?
Right up here.
Page 10.
This is looking at the street. I think this is yours.
It just, it doesn't say. The planning board or staff review board may, as part of their review and approval of a plan, vary, waive certain street design and construction standards in conformance with the variance waiver provisions of Article 14 of the subdivision regulation, which really doesn't say anything.
Well, that, that suggests to me that we have a fair measure of discretion.
It, it suggests the same thing to me. It says that certain street designs, it doesn't tell me what those designs are, ergo, any and all designs, we could waive. I don't recommend that, but that's the way I would read that.
I, I, I think it's limited by the fact we have to be acting rationally and fairly. And to provide the applicant has demonstrated that the performance standards has, has been or will be met, the public health, safety, and welfare protected, and provided the waivers do not have the effect of nullifying the intent or the purpose of the comprehensive plan.
That's the, that's the hard one right there. Because the comp plan says sidewalks.
But it is a bin zone, so it's, the sidewalk.
The comp plan is a plan, not a law.
That's right.
Don't tell that, the comp plan.
I don't care, no, no laws. I'm an politician.
I'm a, I'm a, I'm actually a little disappointed that Phil gave a kind of a tepid answer to my question about, what do you think about a walking path for residents around the?
I guess I'm trying to figure out, I know what you exactly are talking about, because it's rough terrain out here, so. A walking path is, you got to tell you what the walking path is, is a five-foot grass, that's what I.
I'm talking about this area here, just so we're clear, okay? This is, this is where the people live, and something that looped around like that, a walking path.
That's not a problem, do that, that's a nice area.
That's what I'm talking about.
It's black, I think that's in the open space.
Or, you know, even something like that. Something that would accommodate people comfortably walking.
Yeah, that's all open space, and if you was out there, that's easy walking around, except where there's a ledge cliff, the drops off. Outside of that, that's all nice, easy walking all around them lots.
I'm the one guy among us all that didn't have the benefit of the sidewalk, though, so that's, I, I haven't been on the land, so I don't know.
I expected what you were saying or thinking as a walking path. I didn't realize what you were saying there. I was thinking it was a walking path from there all the way up to.
No.
And that's, that's where I was.
That has nothing to do with helping kids get to the school bus, but it does address giving the residents someplace to safely and joyfully walk.
Okay, I think that would be a great idea, but I don't think we can tell him that he has to do that.
That's why I asked him to put the ball in his court.
If it's around that area that you just pointed out, the outside of those lots and not down the roadway, that's very doable, easy to do and willing to do it.
Always get a, sort of small sign of hiking trail.
Yeah, a little designated with four, five-foot walking paths from the woods. Maybe cut a tree here and there, pull a stump, and level it off a little bit so people can, can hike around there.
Correct.
That would take care of my concerns, I just wanted to get out.
Yeah, that would be agreeable.
Yes.
Building a sidewalk that goes nowhere is.
Marty's going to make a motion.
I make a motion that we exclude, or waive sidewalks as a requirement for this particular project.
In addition to.
Based on. Uh, no, adding on, the sidewalk from the cluster to Route 1, to Route 111 is infeasible for one. Two, applicant has offered and agreed to put like a walking trail around the four-unit lot on the perimeter of, of the subdivision.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to waive the requirement for sidewalks.
On that condition?
Yep. Any other, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is four to one opposed, and the only reason I'm opposed is that I don't believe we can put it, put that condition on it.
But he.
If that could.
We're not putting, no, he's offering it. Isn't that an integral part of his plan now?
Yes, we have to come back with.
But it still passes, obviously.
It still passes, but I'm just.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying. You don't agree with the walking path?
Oh, no, I think the walking path's a great idea. I don't believe it should be a part of the condition of the motion.
All right, but you were in favor of not having the sidewalks.
Why not?
Well, you actually put a condition on it?
I'm not, I don't believe that we have the authority to make it a condition, and therefore I'm opposed to the motion.
We're accepting his proposal.
That's what I was doing, he was accepting his.
Okay.
So.
So, now we have a completed application, and we have a sidewalk waiver.
And ideally it would be a get preliminary plan approval, so when next time we come back for final, we'll have all the other information, because we do meet the preliminary plan requirements.
You have a, an accepted, you have a completed plan at this point.
Correct. With the granite curb and whatever else, that's that.
For final.
For final, there's a bunch of other stuff.
Now that's the only thing left, is the final, so yeah.
We haven't officially approved of the preliminary plan.
No, we have not. But that.
Accepting it.
Yes, as we pleaded, is.
Accept it as complete.
And that is a preliminary plan.
We haven't voted to accept the preliminary plan application.
We voted to deem the application complete, which is the process that was before us tonight, was to determine the completeness of the plan, and we've said, yes, this plan is complete.
So it's been approved.
Can he come back and go for final, is that a two-step process, or then what?
It's a one-step.
It's a one-step process.
He can back for final.
Because he's already got the approval of the plan. We're now saying that it's, it's complete. He's made some changes to it, and we're saying it's a completed plan. So now he can come back for the final approval. He's got a bunch of stuff that he needs to do beforehand.
Yes, of course.
Public hearing, right?
Yes, we still have to do a public hearing.
There's nothing new that we'll be requiring, except for the, just the, the P.
Yeah, you got to cross our I D. And the, and the granite thing that we talked about, the type of curving or whatever, I thought we already decided on that. I mean, that, instead of a curb, curb itself, that angle. So you don't cut tires and everything else.
The interior granite curb will not be there.
Right.
Yep.
How about at the entrance on 111, that's still going to have to be granite?
My thought, yeah, it should be there. It, it makes it a distinctive-looking turning spot.
And it's, it's also more rugged to stand up to the abuse at that location.
It is more rugged, yes. That's okay. Question I have, right on his cover page, says that we have to, that I have to pay a per lot cost and a preliminary advertising and per lot cost, which I did some time ago when my subdivision was approved. I paid that to the town already. They, they reimbursed me an amount because we didn't get started. I'm willing to return that reimbursement amount, but I don't want to pay them fees again. That's a couple grand for the six lots, and for everything he's asking for on the cover page.
Isn't that, that's, that wouldn't be something before us, though, would it? I mean, that's just.
It would be before you, yeah. It would be because the selectman kicked the fee schedule back to us.
And I, I paid them once already. Now this letter says I got to pay them again.
Okay, Phil, question to ask you, not reading the amounts or anything else. There were six slots prior, when you first were approved?
Correct.
Fact is, there are six slots now.
Correct.
Okay, the amount has it changed from redemption to present? The amount, has it changed any?
I can't answer that right now, I'm just looking at.
Well, I'm just saying is, if it was paid once, give back, and then, if it's the same amount, then that would be, you know, if the fees went outrageous again, I mean, that's a different story. That's why I'm asking you.
We could ask the town later how much they did screw up his books. I hate the town.
Yeah, then I give it back to you.
They gave a portion of it back.
I'm not getting involved in that.
I think if you pay it a balance, I think that, that.
And I pay back what they reimbursed me.
Right.
I give that back.
Yeah.
No question.
Correct.
But to redo all of these fees again, I don't think I'm ready for that.
It is technically, I think, the same application, we renewed, we extended, or we, we extended.
You gave me a one-year extension a long ago.
Still the same, the same.
So what's your, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Okay, make a motion that he still, just has to cover the balance of what was reimbursed. Seconded, yeah, okay.
Motion has been made and seconded for Mr. Labby to essentially return the money that he was given back. And he'll, and that will.
Cover.
Cover the, the cost. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, that is unanimous.
And so the last thing, we're going to schedule a public hearing, I mean, guys don't want to schedule.
We don't know when you're going to have everything ready.
Right.
So we can't, for final.
You can't schedule until you've got it all put together.
Well, you usually have a public hearing before final.
Yeah, we have three days.
Sometimes I can, so I can hear the public comments, so then I can.
Yeah, we could schedule one.
Want to schedule one for April 12?
Yeah.
I think, because usually, there might be something at a public hearing, then they say, whoa, I got to.
Yeah, I make a motion we schedule a public hearing on April 12.
Will that give you enough time?
Well, you don't have to everything completed.
He won't have to have it completed.
Just for public input.
In case he has any changes or anything else that he can turn out for a public hearing.
It's what, 45 days from the public hearing?
Yeah, right.
I believe, yes, 45 days from the public hearing, so if we have the public hearing in 28 days.
Then the burden's on you.
Then the burden's on you to get it finished and get it completed.
That's right.
And then I'll start, I'll see what the public fill in, we'll have 90% done or 95% done, but.
So we have, we have a motion to have a public hearing on April 12, the motion was seconded.
Who's seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item on the list, item number three.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Aye.
Item number three, Tradiar Paintings' condition of use pre-application. Proposal to create a contract yard two for a commercial paving company on 10.06th parcel of land. Tax map five lots relocated at 44 tons away in the R4 district. Anthony, Kate, and Tradiar are the owners and applicants. Mr. Tradiar.
Good evening.
Take it away, Tradiar.
My wife Caitlin.
Line up front. Don't hide them back in the corner. Jump up to the valley.
Hi, Anthony, this is my wife Caitlin. Thank you for your time. As the pre-application states, we are looking to get a contract of work yard two at our current house, which we have a small apartment, to keep a small fleet of. So, as Ted has directed, we did, we had an updated survey done. And it's my understanding that basically the next step is to have a site visit. Other than that, I don't, it's any more complicated than how, as you mean, your plot.
This, we have the property that makes it very doable, you know? But I don't think there's any problems with that. I think it's just a matter of making sure everything is, works mutually. But things like lighting, or, I don't know, signs, market up signs.
No, there'll be, there will be a small storage material pile of probably somewhere in the 20 to 40 yards of gravel, green grass. Other than that, there'll also be employing vehicles, probably four to six vehicles at most.
Yeah. How about, and as well as your own equipment, right?
Yes, yeah.
What would that consist of?
On the plan, it's, it shows there being three trucks, three, three dump trucks and one smaller truck that will have two trailers attached to them. On those trailers will be my equipment. So everything will be mainly on a trailer, you know, free floating equipment throughout the yard or anything.
Do you do the, the maintenance of your equipment on the site? You know, it's off-site?
Yeah, yeah.
Not any storage of any kind of futonous stuff on the site?
No, absolutely not, no.
Where, where he references, there's some storage in a, in a place that is inside of a setback.
Yeah, I think that was.
Where is it, where is he talking about?
Yeah, that was actually, I was looking this over, that was actually changed. I think originally that he had had the set, he had had the equipment in the setback or beyond the setback, and it was actually changed, or was amended, it should have been anyway, it's on the updated copies that are provided.
Excuse me, who changed?
Scott McDonald.
Okay, because the only thing what we see is what we have here.
Right.
Okay, and, and we haven't seen any other stuff before. So this is what we have, this is what it's showing.
Right.
And.
Is it showing beyond the setback?
That's, that's why, is what we have is what we see.
Okay, so that's, that's inside the setback there, isn't it?
It is.
So I don't understand what this would say that it is beyond the setback. This is general. To me, it looks like everything is within the setbacks.
That's why I asked the question, I guess.
Yeah, I did, this is the one thing that was contradicting what the plan shows.
Is it, is it 35-foot requirement for, for setback on contract yards? I wonder what Ted's talking about here.
Well, the question, one of the, one of the questions is, 35-foot setback from where? But the fact is, this is all one property, I mean.
Well, there is a property on it, yes.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying is.
The front yard setback is 40, 40 feet, side yard is 15, rear yard is 25 feet plus five feet for every story over two stories, which is kind of confusing, because I don't think we could build a building that's more than two stories.
for every story over two stories, which is kind of confusing because I don't think we could build a building that's more than two stories high. That's on page ninety-two. Space and bulk of the A R district.
Read all of those.
Yeah. He's thirty-five foot setback, that's more than fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a side or a rear.
I don't think it makes any difference.
It doesn't make thirty-five still.
Well, he, I see what he's saying, because down here, he's got a, this is the side setback, which is thirty-five. This is the rear, because it's the rear of the lot that he's looking at.
But the requirement is fifteen feet.
Yes, the side is fifteen and the rear is twenty-five. And this appears to be, this has a fifty-foot setback and thirty-five-foot setback. But definitely appears to meet the criteria.
From what we can see here. So you didn't have another, another plan?
You know what, I think we, I read this again here, and I think I understand, it was a little confusing when the first time through. It's, what he's saying is currently the yard intrudes upon the rear yard setback line. So it suggests to me that he thought you were parting stuff inside the setback, right?
Yeah, and then we were able to, I mean, everything's obviously scaled, so we have plenty of room to reach that. You know, within, or, or, yeah, within the setback.
And so the proposal goes, it's only within the yard along the R four.
Yeah.
So this suggests to me that Ted is saying this plan is a good plan.
This plan resolves the issue that you know.
Right.
Yeah. Well, we need to, we need to do a site walk.
I think we can do it soon tonight, but.
No.
Why?
No, 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 if we're going up on Brimstone, that's gonna take us. A lot of time.
We'll make it a little earlier then, make it on the same day, just a little earlier.
If we're gonna do the same day, then let's give it another.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't, I mean, six, I'm pushing.
Yeah.
So I mean. Huh?
Really?
Yeah.
If we go at the same night.
Because I can't.
We're gonna need a whole hour of it, principle?
You're surprised what you're gonna go seeing up there. Take a drive down through there from last time seeing it.
Yeah, but we had the benefit of a really, really complete submission from that, from now. And they laid it right out for us, and they're gonna do, and Libby's gonna have the marking done for the lot, the lot sidelines and the driveway, and the big, I think we're gonna have a, I think we're gonna be in and out.
And this one here is fairly simple, I mean.
This one's, this will be a quick walk. So I think we can get that down in an hour.
So let's play this one for five-thirty?
Well, why you need to, why you can't do, you can't do.
Lucky to do six, right?
I'm lucky to do six, because you can't tell, people picking stuff up, I mean, people don't know how to tell time at times.
Do you think we do both of them in one hour?
I don't think so.
I think it might be pushing, just because of drive time. Go ahead, I wanna see you get out onto one eleven.
Yeah, that'll be bad.
That hour of the day.
Go all the way around.
The first person in line will make the meeting, the last person in line will be late.
Suppose we start the meeting at seven fifteen, right?
Start later, maybe?
Yeah, we have public hearings. How many of us can make five-thirty?
I can.
I can make it, okay.
And we've got two more that possibly could, so we have a quorum debate.
We'll have a quorum if we need it, so let's, let's do it for five-thirty on the twelfth.
Yeah?
Yes, yes.
What time did we say we were gonna meet the other one?
We can move that out.
Okay, okay, I'm just.
And we can push that one a little bit, but this, this one shouldn't be that much of a run. So something to do with.
My motion, we do a site walk for contract paving at five-thirty on, on April 12th.
Second half.
Motion has been made in seconded for a site walk on April 12th at five-thirty for Tradiar. Any, any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
There you go.
Good night, gentlemen.
Okay, see you then.
We're gonna need that to flag anything else?
Yes.
How it felt?
Could you flag the area in terms of where your storage files are gonna be and the buildings show up?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Are you still in the rocks there already?
Yes, I am. Man use ordinance.
Thank you.
Hey. Here a few weeks.
So. Can we ask for their comments, huh?
Yeah.
That'd be good.
You have, you have comments to make on animal husbandry, I wish so. Tell us what they are.
How many minutes do I have?
About thirty-eight seconds.
Filibuster?
Wait a minute.
No, no, you see, in order to filibuster, you have to be up here and eligible to vote.
My name's Mark Connet, Hardscrabble Farms is my basic residency. I also own Highlander Farm, Oliver Farm, Talbot Farm, which was the old Merrill &amp; Young Farm. We have just put three of those farms into Farmland Trust, and I walked to the table.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
You guys can, Yens is most privileged, look at this and pass it on. Three of the farms are currently under the main Farmland Trust, which will never be residential. It'll always be farm for pati- for paternity. The last one, which is the Talbot Farm, which is Merrill &amp; Young Farm, is in the process of going the same distance. So these four farms together come from the middle of the Kenyamuck River, almost all the way to Hidden Meadow Farm. Both sides of the road in some areas, there'll always be farmland, we raise cattle and everything else. And it'll never be residential. I think when Dan Flushman came in, the vision for Arundel was the residential bringing income in. These areas that I purchased, these four farms, were always farmland, going back to the eighteen hundreds, seventeen hundreds. I spent over two hundred thousand dollars in fixing up the fields, the barns, getting permits to build new barns, approved by the towns, and now I'm told that I can't put too many animals in there. And as a farm, I need to be able to have animals in there to create income for the future, the generations that this woman will probably carry on and her generation after us is gonna be perpetual, perpetual. And I think the problem is, if I understand, it's the wrong zone, it's a residential zone.
Correct.
And the theory is, it'll never be residential. Even if you wanna classify that, it'll never be, because I can't have a farm, I can't have a house on any of those properties.
Not a theory, it's a matter of.
Well, it is. But I can't never have any residential houses in that area, so it will be.
But you can have residential houses surrounding that area. It is in the R two zone, and it is, it is supposed to be developed for residential purposes.
I got four hundred acres down there.
Yeah, and, and I understand that, and I don't have a problem with that, but it is in the R two zone.
Correct.
You're, you're going to have neighbors.
Where will my neighbors be?
I have no idea.
Well, you don't, and I don't either, because they can't be in the four hundred acres. When I open my bedroom window in the morning to listen to Bluebird, there's nobody around that I can see. And there never will be. So there's, how can there be a residential subdivision there ever?
Not a residential subdivision, you may have houses running up and down mountain road at some point.
I own both sides.
There's a bunch of houses there now.
They're there now?
Do people live in them? And we, we have people who wanna open doggy daycares on mountain roads.
Okay, that's not named me.
It's across the street from, from your property.
Which one's that?
The one right over here, on the corner.
That's not nothing.
She's, she's two houses down from Town Hall.
Yeah, that's not named me, that doesn't butt me.
I didn't say it'll butt you, it's across, it's across the street from you.
Right, that's in the butt.
And, and there are, and I'm not, I'm not sure any of these properties will abut you. I'm simply saying that based on the way the comp plan has it drawn out, there are going to, there are gonna be houses that go down through there. They may not be there now, they may, they may not be there in five years.
Through where? If I own four hundred acres, I'm not gonna develop.
It's not gonna be on your property.
Right.
I'm saying that your property is going to be surrounded by residences, because it's a residential zone.
Right, but I own all the way to Route One, and I own all the way to Turnpike, so where are these houses gonna be?
Mark, you're missing my point completely.
No, I understand your point.
Unless you own everything in the town of Arundel.
I don't.
You're going to have residential houses around you. They may not abut up against you, they may be across the street from you. You may have, right across from where your farm is, where Hardscrabble is, there's a residence.
I own that, yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize you owned that. But there are residential houses running from there all the way up to Town Hall.
And I own three of those going all the way through.
Okay. You're still gonna end up with residential houses?
Are they separately deeded, Mark, or do you, or?
Four of them are separately deeded.
So you own them individually, they're not part of the trust?
Every trust is individual LLCs. So I get four farms that are Hardscrabble Farm LLC, Highlander Farm LLC, Ol- Oliver Farm LLC, and now, that was the, that's the first one. Just to illustrate the time and effort we put into soil test and everything else. Main, Mainland's futures has come down, and they looked at the soils, and they said, this is a place that we need to really preserve for future generations to have crops. And that's the old Talbot Farms and Merrill &amp; Young. They're all separate deeds, all those four farms are separate deeds.
So my, my question is, I, I miss, perhaps I misunderstood, but I thought the Main Farmland Trust was a, some sort of a a larger entity, an umbrella entity, if you will, and that your farms, Hardscrabble or some of the others are have been contributed into that larger umbrella trust?
They're in the umbrella trust, three of them, that's, that's his point.
Okay.
Yeah.
So those three are Hardscrabble?
Highlander.
Highlander.
And Ol- Oliver.
And Oliver, okay. So the other independent properties along the road that have been referred to that were, said, well, those are, you know, people living there, or they're, you know, residences, are those inside of these, any of these trusts?
Some of them are inside and some of them are out. So later on in life, when the next generation takes over, if they get into a bind, and all of us are in the cemetery, and they decide to buy a piece of machinery or something, when they can actually sell that little parcel. But some of them are in, inside the corporate LLC.
Okay, so.
I think two of them are out, Yens, and I think the rest of them are incorporated in the setback.
And you say they're out, you, you own them individually?
Uh, yeah.
Through, through some entity?
Yeah.
Through some entity?
Yeah, there's only two like, there's only two like that.
Okay.
In case later on in life, again, they have to sell them for whatever reason to carry on.
I, I just wanna say that I'm personally not opposed to what you're doing. It might be what, I wonder, should people wanna have the rural character, this is, this supplies that. But what, you know, even if we, we all agree that the pen board to, to forward something to the town meeting, you still have the, all the neighbors or someone, every, every, at the town meeting, people have to vote. So somehow we have to have something that would be, that would be acceptable to the greatest number of people who are gonna be voting. And, and that's where I'm stuck, like, how do we get that without, without being a problem?
I'm more curious as to, to the aspect of animal husbandry, what do you recommend me, from an animal husbandry point of view?
Actually, that's actually a good, good point.
Yeah.
So you're, you're being invited to be a resource for us, right?
Yeah.
The town spent a lot of money to have somebody in Maryland come up and tell us how we should live. And they said the rural character of Arundel should be kept, one eleven, and I believe it was, one eleven should be preserved for industrial. So I'm providing that service. Those four hundred acres that I just purchased for agricultural purchases will never be developed. When they're all with that, they'll still be undeveloped with it.
But, but that's going to be the case regardless of what we say about animal husbandry. Our question is, we need to address animal husbandry.
Yeah.
We'll, everybody admits that the ordinance is flawed, because I can have a thousand-pound cow or a thousand chickens as long as I stay below the five thousand.
Right.
Pound requirement. What are you suggesting from an ordinance point of view? How do we determine what those numbers are?
Well, may I sit down?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's, you see, that's the, the issue that we're struggling with. And, and when we look at it and we say, okay, horses are one way, cows are one way, ducks are one way, pigs are one way. How do we define?
I'll go back to the old philosophy and the old dictionary, Webster Dictionary of Farm. A farm would, would do anything it could do to survive. If I see next year that beef is gonna be high, and I need to raise another ten calves to sell to make the farm profitable to pay the twelve thousand dollars I'm paying in taxes a year to Arundel, I wanna be able to do that. Next year, if there's a problem in Asia, they have enough, not enough lambs, there's an epidemic, I wanna be able to raise lambs. I will not abuse the land, immune with that article that Yens has.
We're not, we're not telling you to do that.
That's what I, I need flexibility to produce a farm, to do a farm activity.
Okay.
And I don't know what it would be.
You're not the only person that gets affected by the ordinance, so how do we develop a standard that we can apply to our life? And that's the problem that we're struggling with. We've been struggling with this for almost a year, trying to figure out, how do we go about, how do you measure it? How do you say?
Well, why does anything have to be measured? I mean.
Because, because do you want somebody, let's say you don't own four hundred acres, you own six acres, and the guy next to you wants to put, and he's got six acres, and he wants to put in a pig farm. How many pigs should he be allowed to have? And at what point will it impact you? And that's the issue, because man use ordinance is a social compact among all of the people that live in the town. We need to figure out some way to address that issue, so that you can do what you need to do without adversely impacting your neighbors.
May I, may I ask, my name's Alexandria Oliver. What is the particular ordinance right now as far as, what is the, the standard? As far as like, if you have, how many acres, how many animals can you have per acre? Is that how it's measured, or?
No.
I'm just not totally familiar with what the standard is.
That, that's part of the problem.
Well, it is a problem.
That's the problem.
When I didn't own Oliver Farm, I was found out by Ted that I could only have, I believe, ten animal units, which is a thousand pounds an acre. I had, I was paid, I had to pay a surveyor to come in and plot what the pasture was gonna be for a lucky fence. I can't put anything in the bond, I mean, it's just, I'm stifled. So are you asking how many animals per acre?
We're asking for your input as to how we craft how many animals per acre and what, and as well as what kinds of animals. We need help.
Put another way, put another way, we have to have some kind of standards. Help us.
Develop it.
Help us be expansive if, if, if we can do so.
Could I, could I make a?
Go ahead.
I'm Pamela Drew.
Aye.
I actually have no, this makes no impact to me, as you, some of you know, I have ten acres on Limerick Road, I have the alpaca farm.
Yep.
This does not impact me at, currently with my property, but it's, it's, it's just an issue that, that I find of interest, and so that's why I've, I've talked to Mark a couple different times. I'm in R one, and in R one, it's five animals, five animal units.
Right.
Which is five thousand pounds of live animal weight. Doesn't matter how many acres you have. It's five thousand pounds, not an issue for me, because alpacas are only a hundred and fifty to two hundred pounds, so that's, it's never been an issue for me. R two, which is where Mark is, is the same. Again, doesn't matter the acreage, four hundred acres, a thousand acres, two acres minimum, doesn't matter. It's, it's five animal units. R three is the same. R four doesn't appear to give any limitation. So my question to you is, is R four unlimited? There are many other farms in Arundel, and they have far more than five animal units, so I don't know.
We've got performance standards that we're proposing that increases those limits. My reading is. Yeah, we've, we've been, we've been working, trying to figure out a way around this, because I think we all agree that.
I noticed that this was on the agenda several different times, and I, I came tonight because I wondered where the discussion was and what progress you had made. and what progress you had made. So you have a proposal?
We're foundering, quite honestly, because it's such a difficult, define an animal unit.
Yeah, but a chicken weighs a different amount than, per se, a cow, than a llama, than so on and so forth.
And they also, and they also produce, they have a different effect on the environment around them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which, which is why I'm assuming that it was done this way, and it wasn't per acre, it was, it was in pounds, because of the impact.
That's a little weird.
I don't, you know, I don't really know why it was, was done this way.
Can I say, one, one thing I think, uh, that I'm hearing, we all agree on, is that it should be based on more on the acreage. 'Cause if you have 400 acres and you're limited to, to, uh, 5,000 pounds, I mean, that, that doesn't make sense. Where if someone has two acres, they can have to get the same thing. So, but beyond that, that, we're, we're, we're all over the place, we don't know how to, we don't know how to.
I think it also makes sense what, what district you're in, right?
It doesn't make. I think that's the problem, I'm in, I'm in the wrong district.
Well.
No, but that was originally farm.
Yeah, it was.
And that's, that's, and everybody's approached on it since then.
And Dan Fleschman changed it over to, but how's it, oh, which is never gonna be now.
He's not here.
I understand.
The question, here's a good question. And I have no idea, that's why I'm gonna ask you this question. Per beef, we'll use it as an example.
He's, he's surrounded.
How much land or acreage does it take to feed, I'll say?
How much acreage? Uh, we don't buy anything outside of the farm, the farm is sustainable.
Yeah, but what I'm just saying is, okay, if, for hay, for example, okay, how much hay, per se, does, does it need to sustain one, one head? I mean, if, to make the hay for a year, for an example. Of course, depends on how much you eat, I realize that, you know, I mean, but the fact is, does one acre of hayin', per se, keep, keep one animal happy? I mean, I'm just using that as.
The way we fertilize, and, and you, if you look my management agreement with, uh, Maine Farmland Trust, which took soil samples and, uh, sustainably tested all the properties that we take care of, uh, our crops are substantially high nutrition. We can grow quite a few different crops on that same acre to feed four or five different animals.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out as a.
We're not an average farm, we're high-end, we practice it, that's all we do for, we're farms, we're farmers. So we compost, fertilize, spread the north.
But what, what, you know, plus, plus then also too, you might have a section to do something else with the farm.
Yeah.
I mean, uh.
We need flexibility.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying, out of your 400 acres.
Yeah.
If the dream was great, okay, and only great, how many head of cattle would you have? If.
Well, uh, that, see, that's.
Feasibility.
Okay, that's, that's kind of a loaded question again.
But I'm just asking, that's why I came back with the idea of acreage and.
If the farm needs some extra money, and we know the price of beef is coming next year, and wanna keep our calves instead of selling them, we can put up what we call food lots.
Yeah.
They're in a corral, they stay there, there's no, they're fed off till fall.
Yeah.
So I need that flexibility to have that. But on the basis, it's two animals or three animals per acre. But again, if the farm needs to feed the population of the metropolis around here, and I can put them in food lots, we have to do that.
Yeah, okay, so you say two to three critters per acre? Roughly, roughly.
That's roughly.
Okay, now, on that basis of two or three critters an acre, if we were going to break it down for weight-wise, okay? No, how much does a critter weigh? Uh, I know it, it's like turning around, one week we weigh 10 pounds, the next week we weigh 15, I realize that. But I'm just saying, on the average, okay?
We don't separate the mothers from the daughters and sons.
Yeah.
We let them nurture by themselves, we don't, they're weaned, so it's hard to really.
A full grown one, that's where I'm going, I'm not going at a little one, but I mean.
It could be 600, it could be 800, it could be 900.
Is it under 1,000 pounds?
It could be under 1,000 pounds.
Even in the current ordinance, we take into consideration the fact that, that cows have calves. And the calves get to hang out for, I don't remember what the period of time is. They're not counted, uh, until I believe they're like four or six months old.
Six.
They don't even, they don't, they don't become part of that entity.
They don't come to the entity.
'Cause we recognize the fact.
Yeah.
It's good, cows breed cows, sheep breed sheep, and.
This is what Ted did work on, you guys have worked on, it's been away.
Yep.
This increases it to two per acre in all the residential zones. So if you've got 400 acres, that's 800.
That's max.
That's max.
But, but that's why I was coming back to see what they needed, per acreage to sustain.
We haven't been able to reach agreement on that. And we're, we're struggling to find, uh.
Unit of measurement.
Some, yeah, some definition for a unit of measurement, more than anything. 'Cause, 'cause animal unit is 1,000 pounds. Really, I can have a, you could have eight million chickens.
It's not realistic.
It's not. And, and part of the issue that, that has shown up is not only is it, you're looking at, at the animals, well, the waste product from chickens is a whole lot worse than it is from cows.
You get a state.
So we end up looking at it going, what are we gonna, what if there's water close by? How do we address these differences? That's the stuff we're struggling with.
Two state-approved compost facilities on the property, design.
But that, again, Mark, that is yours. How do we translate that to the rest of the town?
How do we impose something on the rest of the people?
That's your problem. Well, that's why I'm asking you to help.
I don't have to tell you. I, 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 I'm a farm, I farm, I don't know if this guy appears at four, four acres, I don't know how he's gonna manage his.
Well, I, I'm just saying, until we can come up with standards that we can have, that will satisfy you, that will satisfy Pam, that will satisfy the guy down the road, that my next-door neighbor has a couple of pigs, until we can satisfy, have a standard that meets all of those needs, it is your problem.
And, and, and it's, it's not only the people you just identified, the examples, but the person who doesn't want any animals at all near them.
Well, how does it affect me, Jens, if they don't want any animals around me when I've got no neighbors?
Well, because they're, because they're concerned about, well, if, if, if there are too many animals next door. Then a fight is picked. We don't want, we don't wanna do that to you, 'cause we, we think what you're doing is a good thing.
Yeah, there's nobody in this board that's opposed to what you're doing.
That's right, that's right.
I understand. So if I'm a little bit, a, a legitimate farm, and I file IRS taxes as a farm, I got good forestry practice, good agriculture practices, I'm, I, I don't know why, there's not a little flexibility, I earn my income from farming. I'm not a homeowner that's got two acres and wants to raise a pig to slaughter in the fall to feed the family. I mean, this, this is our income, this is our life.
And, and that's the issue, they're not pressing the commercial side of it. We need help to figure out how to do that, yes, ma'am?
I was just gonna say, um, you know, maybe you guys could break it down with, like, a certain amount of acreage, having maybe a different ordinance, if somebody's on five acres, this is the certain amount of animal units, and then jumping up to 10 acres, and maybe so on and so forth, that might be a possibility.
Or may, or maybe refining.
I'm just throwing that out there, just from my own perspective. 400, you know, is a far cry from five, but I understand where you're saying that you need to have a precedence that sets a baseline for everybody else who may or may not be following practices farming as we are, or to the T, or as refined as we are. You know, obviously, if they're on five acres, they're not gonna have 40 cows, or what have you, but the animal units are different as far as weight as well. So I don't know if maybe there could be some sort of cross-chart or scale. Hey, you're on five acres, you can have 15 chickens, or what have you, I'm just throwing out a random number, but instead of having it be, you know, 400 acres, far cry from five, but, um, maybe some sort of numerical chart based on a random acreage, is, I don't know, going up from five to 10 to 20, or, I'm, I'm unsure.
Put another way. Put another way, subdefining animal units, and relating that to acreage and the type of animal.
I would agree with that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, those three, are you, is that?
Well, Jens, with the acreage things, it kinda hurts me, 'cause again.
No, it doesn't hurt you, you've got a lot of acreage.
I, I understand.
That's gonna, that's gonna, it's gonna help you, Mark. If we take into account how much, uh, 'cause the amount of acreage matters. You definitely want that as part of the equation.
How about a food lot? You know what a food lot is? It's a corral, that's, uh, when they go to market, we know the price of beef going to Boston or Portsmouth, and we get a whole bunch in there, they could be condensed for that short period of time with, Ty lives in Haywood.
But we're, we're not talking about.
That's all part of the same farm.
Putting all of the animals in, we're looking at, say, okay, let, let's assume, for argument's sake, we say, uh, two animals per acre. So you can have 1,600 animals. If you put them all together in one group for, for a feedlot, okay.
They wouldn't be, all the other animals would still be there.
Yeah.
But in the feedlot would be an additional.
It's all part of the same lot, though, it's all part of the same.
But it would be the 1,600 that are already out there.
No, it would include all of them.
That's why, that's why it can't be, a, a real farm, it can't be. Those 1,600 are making babies to go for next year to eat.
But we don't care about the babies, the babies would not qualify, they're not part of the animal units that will.
Eventually, they're gonna be heifers.
Because, because we're saying that, you know, you're gonna get rid of those, or you're gonna get rid of mama, at some point.
You're not talking 1,600, you're talking 800. Two per acre, at 400 acres, 800.
Okay, that's even better.
You're gonna go?
Hey, don't, don't count on me, I thought he had 800 acres.
And that's a lot better than, than what you're allowed now, is, what are you, 20 altogether or something now?
Well, see, Mark, the other thing is, we just went through something similar, okay? Working through all this, we played with the equestrian, okay? And that way we turned out, got different guidelines, so that everybody was happy, okay? Or far as we know, it's happy, okay? This is why we're asking for the resource, okay? We all play different games, and play work, okay? You have your work, you know what you're talking about, or hopefully, I mean, vice versa, okay? I do my wrenches, he does his pencil, Jens does his thing, and he does his thing, sorry. This is why we all pull to get resources.
But what happens if we go to sheep? I mean, we wanna be able to.
Yeah, but guess what, then we have a guideline, we'll have a guideline with sheep.
Well, we came up with, I don't know if you've seen this, this is just a draft, but, but we have for, um, for, let's say, for vines.
You can have, take a look at this one.
It would be two per acre, if it's sheep or goats, up to six per acre.
Okay.
But goats, goats.
And so we, that way we're looking at different species, like a chicken, I don't know what it is here, chicken 20, 20 up to 100, which is a lot per acre. But, um, so depending on the type of animal, you'd be able to have more or less.
This is just a draft of what has been put together, this is not gospel, but it's just some direction that we're taking to enhance farming in the, in the area.
And one of the problems that we have is, is because you're in zone two, that whatever change we make, it would, it would affect.
I know.
Most of the town is zone two.
Can you change my zone or do an overlay?
Well.
Nobody wants to do that.
That, that, I, I asked Rick, you know, what, was he considered seeking to change your zone?
This is never gonna change, you saw the paperwork, this is.
That might even.
Well, I don't know.
It's not a question of whether your farm is going to change, it's a question of whether or not the zone that your farm is located in changes.
But an overlay could be an exception, an overlay makes an exception to, to what, what, there's like, cell towers has an overlay zone. Um, and it's in zone two, they can only build within the cell tower overlay zone.
So's your mobile home.
Yep.
I mean, but, but the fact is, we, one of the reasons why some of this wasn't done, because they didn't wanna call spot zoning.
Yeah, don't get into that, um, so, we don't know the best way, there's all.
It is tough, I think you people are making it tough, I mean, out of northern Maine, they.
We're not making it tough, this is what we have working with.
Who?
We're, this is what we have working with, we're trying to correct it.
Yeah.
So we're not making it tough.
But I mean, I talk to people in Dexter, there, there's not this kind of, uh, scrutiny on farming and stuff.
But Dexter's a different community.
I understand.
This is southern Maine.
This is northern Massachusetts.
Huh?
This is northern Massachusetts.
I understand, so now we're being kind of pushed into this corral. Now, the other thing is, I'd like to have the ability, uh, for income, if somebody wants, I've got all these stalls in these barns, that sometimes are empty, if somebody wants to board a horse there, or board sheep, or dogs for the winter, not, maybe not dogs, I want that flexibility to bring that income in, to do whatever I have to pay the taxes. So I mean, it's not just necessarily drawing strawberries and beef and everything else. I need the flexibility to maybe put a, I don't want a husk farm in there, but if somebody wants to board a horse or two for the winter, I need that flexibility to, and she does, to bring that income in and carry on.
Marty mentioned we've been working on equestrian, with horses, and we have, in effect, allowed, allowed some of that.
I heard that, you'll tell me about that.
Yeah, so, and so the, the door's been open for that type of thing. Of course, keep in mind, it's, it has to go to town meeting to be approved, that, that's always an issue. But, uh, maybe the same thing could be done with, with sheep, or llamas, or something, I don't know.
Now, just like for an example, now, beef critters, they ball, but they don't strip everything down to the bare ground. Sheep, when they go through, they eat about everything down to the bare roots, per se. I mean, just using that as an example.
Marty, sometimes we do that intentionally, it's called grazing, you do an acre, it's stripped down, it's planted with alfalfa to build the soil up, they go to the next acre, it stands, so that.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, uh, so that's why, you, you go by your beef weight, or do you go by acreage to turn out the, the critter? I mean, uh, that's where, this is all a dilemma, I mean, uh.
I guess you know what wrench to put on a knot, and I know what to put on my, my.
Yeah, that's why I said we all play it different way.
There's no.
Mark, that's why we, we could, we could use your help, or it's in the salt, or some.
I want help, I, I want help.
Well, I'm thinking, the reason that it wasn't set out with a specific species of animal previously, I, and, I, I'm thinking way back to when I started with alpacas, which was like around 2001. I, I don't remember now if it was like this previously, and it was chang, was it?
It was changed in 2007, according to the ordinance.
Yeah, it was changed to be just simply by weight.
Yep.
So that you didn't have to get into all of this, this type of animal, and this type of animal, and now somebody's got something else. Because, see, this doesn't take in the ostrich fad, and the emu, oh, the emu thing, and the ostrich thing. So then somebody else comes up with something else. So I think they went with, with weight.
They moved.
Which is, which is fine.
To a point.
To a certain extent. Um, but, you know, to, to simplify this, there, there are a few ways to approach it that, that could be simpler, if you don't wanna get into too much change. I mean, you, you could say that because R4 appears to be unlimited, I don't know, I mean, there's some dairy farms in Arundel, I don't, they must be in R4, I guess, I'm not really sure.
Billy Harrison?
Harrison, uh, there's one on Thompson Road, uh, Digger and Beth Hill. Um, I don't know what zones they're in. Um, but if R4 is unlimited, you could say that any property with an Ag Easeman, which is what Mark has on these properties, then it reverts to R4, no matter, no matter which district it's in.
That doesn't make sense.
Or, you could say, make an exception, that in R2 and R3, maybe leave R1 out of it, because R1 is residential, I only have 10 acres, like I said, this doesn't really impact me anyway. I had one close neighbor when I started, I now have two close neighbors, 'cause somebody built near me. So, you know, maybe R1, leave alone. But R2 and R3, uh, make an exception for a property that's over, I don't know, some set number of acres, reverts to what R4 is, because it's a bigger property, and there's gonna be room to have, um, enough setback from neighbors.
Here's my, I, I understand that, I'm opposed to zoning by size of lot, because what happens if you decide you've got 40 acres and you can do something, and when you pass away, your kids decide that they're gonna do something else? That now they're either stuck with a restriction like Mark, that land's never gonna be done anything other than a farm, ever. His great-great-great-great-grand. His great, 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 great grandchildren are gonna be living on that farm. If you do that and you've got this piece of property and your kids cut it down, they've eliminated the farm. If they, if, if we say that it has to be twenty acres, if they sell off fifteen, they have to close their farm down.
Yeah, they, yes, they would. They would, cause they would no longer have.
But it's a grandfathered situation.
The amount of acreage.
That my, my concern becomes it's a grandfathered situation, even if you've cut down the size of the acreage. You, there, there are problems that it generates having the acreage.
Well, that, I mean, that was a suggestion. I'm just throwing stuff out too, as, as to what, you know, what one suggestion might lead to something else. Changing the zone was another one of my, one of my thoughts at, at one point. That was suggested to me to be changed to R4, which I thought was kind of odd, because I'm in R1, just zipped to R4. That was kind of strange, but we did, that was never pursued. I, I don't know. It, it just seems like it, it doesn't have to be an insurmountable problem.
No.
Um, in my previous life, when we needed to set a new policy for something, we were never above looking at somebody else's to see what they were doing.
Yep.
Rather than reinventing the wheel. Um.
We, and the victim has been trying to be reached.
Most of, most of the information that we got on the different animal units came from the Department of Agriculture, the feds.
And those may be templates that were developed in areas that are more, uh, rural, homogeneous in terms of the animal, animals being raised, which would explain the, the use of units, I think.
Okay. I used straight guidelines ago with that book you're looking at right now. You've seen the maps in there in the first page? I got straight guidelines, how much compost and manure I can put on the land, what time of year I can put it on the land. Uh, there's all kinds of restrictions that the Maine Farm and Trust makes me, and they come down twice a year to, and I, I get five star ratings. So it's, it's not just, uh, you going in there and spreading the slogan.
We're not worried about what you're doing. It's what if someone, like you said earlier, what if someone doesn't have those practices?
I can, I can remember.
Mark, we know we are playing pollution through the town, okay?
I understand that. I'm, I'm representing my farm. I don't know about, this is.
No, but I'm just saying, you know.
We, we have to look at the, the broadest use, or maybe the worst.
I know.
I, 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 Mark, I can remember forty years ago when down on the mountain road, there was a pig farm.
Yeah.
And you smell it up on Thompson Road.
Yeah.
We wanna avoid that.
Okay, but the thing is, is so many things have changed. You look at one thing particular. I'll give you an example of how outsiders have changed so much, okay? What's a foghorn? What's a foghorn used for, okay? Now foghorn's not allowed to be blown because it annoys somebody.
Yep.
Unless you have a radio beacon.
Guys, if you could, if, if you can help us with this, it would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
Give us, give us some input. You've given us some great input tonight.
Okay, good.
We could use more, cause this, we're, this is an issue we're struggling with. We'd like to have something ready for town meeting, but I don't know if we will. But this is, this is.
You at least give us something where you try to get it, so then guess what? The farm, uh, the fall comes, guess what? Maybe it might be helped to be productive. If we, if, if we get a pass for town meeting, so.
So what do you want me to do?
We'll talk to try.
Give us some input.
Give us some input.
Give us some ideas.
Just not talk, give us some facts and figures.
Yeah, with specificity, Mark, and not just, oh, we need, I need flexibility. That's, that's, you know, that's, have limited help to us. We know that. We, we take that for granted. We know you need that.
Well, they can't.
Because, what, Mark, whatever this ordinance is, it's gonna apply to the entire town. It has to, because we can't develop an ordinance just for you.
That's, that's.
How about if you change the, uh, zone?
We can't do that.
Oh, you can't?
No.
You, you, I think.
Well, we got the comprehensive plan to play with.
So that'll take two years, huh?
You, you could petition town meeting to get it changed and you'd have to go through the process and you're right, and it would probably take about two years.
So you want me to try to get a plan going for the whole town or?
No, I want you to help us develop that plan. It's our responsibility to go through and do it, but let's face it. We have a lawyer, an accountant, a mechanic. What I know about farms, not a whole lot.
That's what I was trying to use as a guideline, yeah.
So, I mean, you have a farm, Pam has critters on her property. These are the, these are the people that we need to help us develop the ordinance, but the ordinance has to fit townwide.
Or at least give us some, it fits partially for now.
Or in. We could, we could do something that would develop an ordinance that says, this is the R4 ordinance or, or R2, R3, R4. So we could say you can, you can do this in this area and develop that ordinance that would allow, and you could do it based on acreage. You know, I'm not a big fan of that, but I'm not in charge of the world.
Your question is a thought. It may, might be helpful, not by zone, but turn on definition farming, okay? We have a definition, but if it's being used in such a way for guideline, I mean, that, that's just a.
It's one of those things that we have to look at. Everything is open.
Farm, farm of so many acres, okay, you know, they could do.
It took us almost six months to get to that chart.
Yeah, the charts you're looking at took a long time to get it.
Cause in a, in a lot of instances, we just run out of time, cause we, we're only here.
I mean, that.
Yeah, we meet every two weeks and.
This one?
Please.
More coffee machine here?
No.
Roger, Roger's been out of town. He hasn't seen all of this stuff. But I do, I do thank you for coming.
I don't want you to be impervent in this, this gospel, you know. I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to adjourn.
Question. Was there any other comment that we could have?
Yes.
Not the town planner.
Did, did we have anything delegated to you to tell us?
No, I'm asking.
Inch by inch, it's a finch.
Okay, then I'll second it.
That's already been seconded. We are adjourned, we are adjourned at nine thirty-six.
Oh, you know what? Mark, I have an excellent.
Okay.
That's only guideline.
Is that the latest one?